Okay, welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. We've already been meeting for a couple of hours, but we're going to do some more meetings. This is good. Again, if you could just silence your cell phones. If anyone would like to speak during the meeting tonight, there's a sign up desk out in the hall. If you haven't signed up to speak and you decide you want to speak, please just walk out into the hall and sign up and it will populate on our list right here in front of us. All right, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to begin our evening with proclamations. But first, we have an unusual proclamation. We're welcoming Dr. Rob Jackson, the Superintendent of Buncombe County Schools. And if you would be so kind as to come forward. And this is just an opportunity for us to meet you and you to meet us, so welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. It's such a delight to have just a few moments to introduce myself to you. In the last couple of months, I've had the opportunity to return home. I grew up in Buncombe County. This is my ninth year serving as a superintendent. And being able to return to Buncombe County is an incredible blessing. As our school system continues to move forward, we commit to each of our municipalities to continue the partnership we have with our municipalities, including the city of Asheville. We're very proud of that partnership and looking forward to growing that partnership. I certainly have enjoyed working with my friend and colleague, Dr. Jim Cosby. If there's a Mount Rushmore of superintendents in the state of North Carolina, Dr. Cosby would be on that Mount Rushmore. And it's certainly been great to work with him. As we move forward, I simply wanted to be here on behalf of our Board of Education to share with you our appreciation for all that the city of Asheville has done to support the Buncombe County school system and all that we'll be able to continue to do together. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
We have a couple of proclamations on our calendar. The first is the Year of the Trail. And I've got a list of folks that are here for this. Claudia Nix, David Nutter, and Mike Zukowski. And if you all could please come forward. And if you have anybody else that you brought along with you that I didn't list, please feel free to bring them up as well and meet me down there. Claudia's approach, shows how this works. Okay, I'm going to read it and then you all can say some things.
Whereas Asheville's natural beauty is critical to its residents' quality of life, health, and economic well-being. And whereas the trails that span across our community are an integral part of the recreational and transportation possibilities of our area and promote an enjoyment of scenic beauty by our residents and our visitors. And whereas the parks, greenways, trails, and natural areas in our community are welcoming to all and provide a common ground for people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds to access our rich and diverse natural, cultural, and historic resources. And whereas the city of Asheville's natural assets and resources are integral to disaster recovery and resiliency to climate change for future generations. And whereas the nature trails in Asheville vary from less than a mile in length to the Mountains to Sea Trail that stretches more than 1,000 miles from the mountains to the coast, the trail types that range from the French Broad River Greenway to the Hominy Creek Greenway, from the dirt trails in Richmond Park to the urban bikeways along the Wilma Dyckman Greenway, from the Blue Ways of our state rivers to the Urban Trail through the heart of downtown, and for the trails that plan for connectivity from the Reed Creek Greenway that will connect a university campus to downtown to the Fonta Flora State Trail that will connect Asheville to Lake James. And whereas trails offer quality of life benefits to all as expressions of local community, character, and pride, as outdoor workshops for science education, as tools for economic revitalization, as free resources for healthy recreation, as accessible alternative transportation, and as sites for social and cultural events. And whereas the North Carolina General Assembly designated 2023 as the Year of the Trail in North Carolina to promote and celebrate the state's extensive network of trails that showcase our state's beauty, vibrancy, and culture. And whereas North Carolina is known as the Great Trails State, now therefore I, Esther Mannheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim 2023 as the Year of the Trail in the city of Asheville and commend its observance to all people.
Thank you, Esther. This is extremely exciting for me. I have worked to improve conditions for cyclists in this community for 40 years. And so to see the improvements that are happening, to make it possible for everyone to get around safely in our community warms my heart. Thank you very much.
I think it's more than fair to say that we are all thrilled by the way in which the state of North Carolina is now promoting, funding, planning, and celebrating trails and greenways throughout the state. I think this will be a magnificent year of the trail, which we're all going to enjoy. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say really quickly, I mean, a huge shout out to Claudia Nix and her over 40 years of investment of time, talent, and energy advocating for safe conditions. These trail systems are going to be a great boon. They're going to complement our Asheville on Bikes After School youth program and create greater access for the youth in our city to be able to enjoy our city. So, thank you all very much.
And our second and last proclamation this evening is Invasive Species Awareness Week. And there's several folks that are here for this one too, so please come up. I've got Dawn Chavez, Susan Surtain, Karen McNeil, Raven Sterling, and again, anyone else that is with you, please feel free to come forward.
Welcome and thank you for being here. So whereas non-native invasive plants pose a major threat on a national scale to our native plants, across the US invasive plants are estimated to occur on 7 million acres of our national parklands and at least 1.5 million acres are severely infested. And whereas local city, county, and private lands are also plagued with invasive non-native plants and trees and are having potentially even higher infestation rates. And whereas non-native invasive plant species are harmful to our natural ecosystems, destroying or replacing native food sources and the wildlife dependent on them, making the ecosystem less diverse and more susceptible to further disturbances such as disease and fire. Whereas native plants have extensive root systems that control erosion and moderate floods, filter water to improve quality, and decrease the amount of water needed for landscape maintenance, as well as sequester carbon to combat climate change. And whereas, by engaging the city of Asheville residents to become more aware of the value of native plants and trees and educating them about all the different species of non-native invasive plants and trees and the multitude of dangers these invasives pose to our urban and mountain forests, we can influence them to repair their own yards and property. And whereas, it is our hope that this awareness will continue beyond one week and will prompt more planting of native trees and plants, the decline in sales of invasive plants, and the formation of neighborhood volunteer groups such as the Weed Rangle to help the community help itself to become a more balanced, beautiful, and healthy place to live. Now therefore I, on behalf of Esther Mannheimer, the Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim the week of February 20th to the 26th as Invasive Species Awareness Week in Asheville and hereby encourage residents to participate in Invasive Species Awareness Week to promote knowledge and understanding of the threats posed by invasive species.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Mayor, and the council members for supporting this proclamation. And my name's Karen McNeil. I'm here on behalf of the Montford Neighborhood Association. So I also want to thank you for awarding us a matching grant to work on the invasives on the Reed Creek Greenway. We'll have plenty of volunteer opportunities to do that throughout the course of the year. We're working with Kudzu Culture and Raven Invasive Plant Management.
Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council. My name is Raven. My business is Raven Invasive Plant Management. I like to think we're Asheville's premier invasive plant management firm that uses mechanical removal. That means we use no chemicals. We're not poisoning the earth as we're trying to remove these invasive plants. I started doing this work four years ago and since then have worked really, really hard to raise awareness of the threat of non-native invasive plants in our area, the threats to trees and native plants. I really appreciate this proclamation. Looking forward to working with the Montford Neighborhood Association. Thank you for that matching grant. We are doing that work. In addition, I am investing $2,800 of our resources toward that project in addition to the $5,000 that the neighborhood and the city has raised. So thank you again. I look forward to bringing this matter before more of our community and educating as many people as possible.
Well, thank you all because that's much needed. All right, all those that were here for proclamations, this is your chance, your getaway. All right, we're going to move into the consent agenda. First, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. And I know we've got some discussion.
I'll make a motion. Second?
Right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Questions, comments regarding the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have two items I just wanted to make some comments on. One is item number I, which talks about our need for new buses. So staff is asking us to approve the purchase of four diesel buses. And I gotta be honest, it kind of hurts my heart to pursue diesel vehicles in 2023. And we need new buses yesterday. We can't wait on the manufacturing industry to provide us with the type of electric or hybrid vehicles we need for our space constraints and our hilly terrain. So, you know, I'm in support of this. And what's really awesome is in the face of us having to make this diesel purchase now, we are proposing and planning to make a zero emissions plan for our transit so that after this, we might be in a position to say no to diesel forever. So I know sometimes plans can feel like theoretical in the future, but it's complex to get vehicles that we need with the type of emissions that we know we need. And I think that us making that step is the right one. So I wanted to note that. And then the other place I wanted to note is, duh, 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 item K, which talks about us shifting into briefing work sessions. And I just want to, you know, I know that a lot of folks in the community have brought this up. There's been conversations in the press. And just want to say, I think it's good for us to try new things sometimes. And so this will be something that we'll be pursuing. And the public will be along for the ride with us. So let us know how it's going as we experiment with this format.
If I might add to both of those, I share your concern around the purchase of diesel buses. And one of the things that we hear often is that we can't find hybrid buses that will work on our routes due to our mountainous terrain. And so I have asked some follow-up questions to those. We know that hybrid buses can reduce carbon emissions by up to 75%. So as we work towards making sure that we buy buses that are in good shape, that are ready for our system for the long haul and make good investments, which, you know, some of the previous efforts, we failed to find those solutions for our community. But I do think that we need to make sure our purchasing matches our long-term goals. But the second thing in regards to item K, I'm among community members who signed on to the open meetings policy advocacy. This is a step in moving to doing more of the people's work in public, ensuring that taxpayer-funded, regularly scheduled meetings of council can be an opportunity to engage the public and educate the public while we educate ourselves, making sure that we have all the information around our budget plans and policies going into important decisions. And there were legal parts of our check-ins that will now be covered either in closed sessions or in memos, both of which have a feature that includes public documentation. There wasn't public documentation of our check-ins because they weren't public meetings. And so this is another opportunity to capture the story and tell the story of the hard work that we're doing, challenging issues, and the successes that we'll share together when we do the people's work in public. So thank you for the effort to schedule these meetings in public and follow us on the journey as we try this new effort. Thank you, Deborah, and staff.
We do have a couple of people signed up to speak. So let me pull that up. And folks, when you speak, you'll have three minutes to speak. And just watch the lights on the lectern. Green means go, orange or amber means you're getting close to the finish, and then red means stop. So the first person signed up to speak under the consent agenda is Nina Tobisch.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to address agenda item K in the consent agenda. First of all, starting with congratulating you on taking this step. I think it's terrific. I think it will serve the community well. And the most important thing about it is that it opens the door for community members to make informed public comment, either directly to you or in other fora or during council meetings before a vote is taken on matters because they will have been able to follow along with your deliberations. I'm asking you to break this item K out from the consent agenda and vote on it separately. And here's why. I think it's such an important thing that it's important that people see that this is not lumped in with everything else, but this is something that the council is embracing with the full consent and participation of every council member. I'm asking each of you to go on the record in support of this change. I'd also like to hear some discussion around moving to this being the sole manner in which you all conduct your deliberations, with the exception of legal requirements for privacy as mentioned by Councilmember Roney. If you're not going to do that, I would like to see really clear guidelines for when you use an alternative method, that the public can understand when you choose not to deliberate in public but behind closed doors. I hope that in any case, if you do continue to have check-ins behind closed doors, that there are not only agendas available for public access, but also that minutes will be available after those meetings. Again, except for cases of privileged conversation. Once again, thank you for moving forward on this. I do ask that you break this item out and vote on it separately from the entire consent agenda. I think it's really important because this is an opportunity for public accountability. And this is, this move towards transparency is something that should be celebrated and be seen as a full commitment of the council. Thank you for your consideration.
The other person signed up to speak under the consent agenda is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
So yeah, yeah, yeah. In regards to item I, with the diesel buses, I want to say thank you for the purchase of the diesel buses. I know that electric buses are very popular, especially here in Asheville. Electric bus, good for us because of the zero emissions and they're nice and quiet and they keep our air clean, which is the same as zero emissions. And zero emissions pairs well with politicians. And, you know, with the excitement of electric buses, I just want you to keep in mind that this is what is required for us to breathe nicer air in Asheville, North Carolina. This is a cobalt mine in the Democratic Republic of Congo. You'll notice that the only piece of machinery in this pit is a dump truck to collect all, to collect all the bags of dirt that's hand mined. For those people, I'm sure that's a diesel truck. It's just sack after sack after sack of pits of 10,000 men and boys digging by hand for $2 a day so that we can have nicer air in Asheville. And this is for the lithium ion batteries that are required of electric vehicles and laptops and cell phones. So we all have, you know, some complicity in the demand for these minerals and the labor that's required of that. And this is what that looks like. $2 a day, sack after sack after sack. You know, women, children beaten on the earth with nothing but hammers. That's it, that's all they got to do that. You can also make money by just doing renegade mining, sort of wildcat mining, get on a crew and dig 100 feet down into the earth in a tunnel not much bigger than yourself with hammers to collect this. No ropes, no safety nets, no nothing, nothing. So that we can breathe nicer air in Asheville, North Carolina with quiet buses because diesel buses are noisy. This is what it takes to do that. So we can do this. This is Elon Musk's Tesla. Of course, he made billions of dollars selling electric vehicles and so much so that he could build a rocket ship company and launch an electric vehicle to Mars just because, I mean, I guess that's kind of cool. But this is the beginning of the supply chain. It goes from here to here to our cell phones, to our laptops. So, you know, think about that. Like, why are we so privileged here in Asheville? And we need our air to be cleaner and our buses to be quiet. Thank these people for that. I mean, this is not thinking globally and acting locally when, you know, our toys come at this expense. You know how much a new MacBook Pro costs?
Thank you.
Years, $2 a day.
We don't have anyone else signed up to speak under public comment for the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Turning now to presentations and reports. We have a manager's report and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, Deborah Campbell.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This will be quick, we hope. We have two items that we want to update you all on. And we are trying to do these kinds of updates as often as possible, particularly related to the second quarter fiscal year 2023 financial report. We're trying to give you information on the budget process before you go into your retreat. And then the last item, we're going to have a capital improvement program update. We gave you a quarterly update just a couple of months ago and these will be focusing in on some specific projects that will be coming to your agenda for action in the next one to two months. So Taylor, we're turning it over to you for the second quarter financial report.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Taylor Floyd, Budget Manager. And as Ms. Campbell said, I'm here to give the second quarter report for fiscal year 2023. So we're going to start with revenues and then I'll go to the expenses. First, personnel, then operating, and then wrap up. Our key takeaways, I think I can summarize as things look good. Our revenues are expected to meet or exceed our budget. Specifically, our sales tax revenues continue to exceed our estimates. And spending, the expense side, is occurring as expected. So going to the revenues, just as a reminder, this is our adopted general fund revenues. We're going to focus on, or I'm going to focus on, property tax and sales tax because those represent an overwhelming majority, about 75% of our general fund revenues. So we've actually received our official tax-based data from Buncombe County. And based on that information, we expect that we will end the year very near our budget estimates. That is, you know, slightly impacted by the agreement between HCA and the county on the property values for HCA's property. We informed you about that at the quarter one update. And then our sales tax revenue continues to perform better than expected. So through the first four months of the fiscal year, we're up 12.1% from the prior fiscal year. We actually just got the fifth month, so I guess that is November, on Monday. That actually is looking a little, not quite as good as the four previous, only up about 2.5%. So that brings that total down to about 10%, but still much higher than our last fiscal year. Wanted to give you a brief update on the parking fund. Revenues from garages and meters are performing as expected and in line with budget for where we're at in the fiscal year. We did want to make mention that is significantly better than where the parking fund was at in the previous fiscal year. And our garage revenues specifically are in line with pre-pandemic budget performance. So what that means is that relative to budget, they're about the same percentage year-to-date. And they're also much closer to pre-pandemic actuals. So the actual dollar figure themselves are much closer to where we were at before the pandemic started, which is good. So a few other notes on revenues. Our overall, through the first or the second quarter, general fund revenues are 17% of budget. But that is primarily because our largest piece, property tax revenue, we haven't gotten most of that because most folks haven't paid their bills yet. But that will get reported in January and we'll update you on that in the third quarter report. And then overall, in our enterprise funds, the revenues there range a bit. But again, nothing that is concerning as we would expect. We did want to make note that based on current, or events that have happened and some additional ones that are planned through the rest of the year, the Civic Center Fund is expected to perform much better than budget. And we'll be bringing a budget amendment at your next meeting so that they will have the expense budget available to purchase things that they resell for those upcoming events. Any questions on the revenue side?
Doesn't it seem like sales tax is just never going backwards? Is this inflation, like?
Oh, no, we've seen it happen.
It's a percentage of the cost of an item. So I guess it's inflation, but also increased purchasing, I mean.
Yeah, I think certainly inflation is definitely a factor. And it's really difficult to really do any trend analysis just based on the information that the state gives us because they don't give us very much.
Right.
But it is, I would say, I mean, I feel like this word was used a lot in the pandemic, unprecedented how consistent the growth has been really kind of after those first few months of the pandemic. It's been very surprising.
We have had, we have had years where it actually dipped below. So I always worry about that, even though it does always seem strong.
Seems like many quarters in a row, it's just climbing in these unprecedented ways.
I think we saw the dip after the '08 crash.
And then just because of the work session we just had, you just say the Harris Cherokee Center is outperforming, which is under the management of the gentleman who is saying he can improve what's happening at McCormick or at Memorial Stadium, sorry, I just wanted to tie those two.
Chris Corle does a wonderful job, undoubtedly. We appreciate his work. Moving on to, sorry, that should say quarter two expenses overview. Again, just a reminder, where we spend most of our money is in the salary and wages and benefits. So those are people. So those are people, of course, about, at about 60% of the general fund budget. And that is because the services that we deliver require people to deliver them. So starting with personnel expenses, again, we're seeing actuals track the budget as we would anticipate. Reminder, what we did with budget adoption, or what you all did with budget adoption, was an increase to the minimum salary for full-time employees to $35,360 annually and then a 5% increase for most other staff, two and a half percent for folks that had been here for a relatively short amount of time. So that was all effective in July. We had planned to do an adjustment to take that minimum salary up to $36,816 and do some compression adjustments in January. We were actually able to get that work done a little bit earlier and make those adjustments for our, our employees in November with the second pay period in November. So that's already happened. And then finally, again, a reminder, we've made some additional recruitment and retention incentives for the Asheville Police Department, and those are being funded from within their existing personnel budget. On the operating side, again, as, as we just mentioned, inflation is still a concern, but we are seeing expenses trending within budgets so far. Mentioned earlier at the policy, finance and HR committee that, you know, part of that is likely, you know, we saw, we've seen gas prices moderate, so that's helping a little bit from a budget perspective. Did want to mention that we are still experiencing a driver shortage in transit. And as a result, we do still have reduced frequency on the WE1 route. But from a, from a budget perspective and cost perspective, we're seeing charges tracking, again, the budget as we would anticipate. One thing related to the management agreement that you all approved after the fiscal year started at, for the municipal golf course, that agreement includes a, a revenue sharing model with the management company and the city. We're not sure where that will end up ultimately. Our current estimate is that that could have as much as a $225,000 impact, but we will keep you all updated on that and believe that we'll be able to find that amount through savings elsewhere in the general fund if we need it. Any questions on the expense side?
So we did cover this on the public, what, policy, finance and HR with you earlier this afternoon. And there's a couple, like, I guess, follow-up questions I have from that. One is just a value statement. I'm so glad that people are demanding wages and quality of life and quality of work that adds to their value and their health and wellbeing. That said, while we did bump up our living wages, which is important as a, you know, lead employer in the region, we also are like behind because there's a new living wage policy. So we need to talk about that going into the budget. But one of the things that did come up in our meeting earlier today is transit. When we have our own employees, we have more control over wages for retention and recruitment. When we're contracting out, my curiosity was around, are we anticipating that the need to pay bus staff and drivers more is going to come back to us as a budget amendment? Or is that going to be absorbed in our current contract and then we'll just budget again the next cycle? I know I didn't hear an answer yet today and we may not have one, but I think it's one that we need to be prepared to ask. We also talked a little bit about parking revenue earlier today and that we're, you know, conservative in our assessment and feeling like things are back where they need to be, but parking revenue is how we fund transit. So I wanted to hear maybe some more confidence around the logistical issues that we had around parking before have been resolved to a place where we're not going to see a need to back up of transit funding or fill gaps again. So while we might not have the answers today, I am looking forward to hearing them. Another one is I'd have requested a vacancy by wage and salary rate, which the staff generously provided in the past. So I'm really just asking for an update to that. And one of the reasons is when we have huge vacancies in sanitation, public works, parks and rec, public safety, I'm looking to see what other communities are doing to say, okay, folks aren't applying for these jobs. I saw billboards all the way to the triangle area this weekend that, that cities across North Carolina are hiring. So what are we going to do instead of maybe not answering the phone is finding a new way to answer the phone and, and match up people's needs and expectations so that we can provide quality equitable service outcomes. I know that's a desire for all of us. I've been there filling the gap when you're doing tons of overtime, but overtime isn't what we're seeing today. And I think we, we need to look at that next too. It's, it's not just that we have vacancies and we're hoarding resources. We actually are having to spend a lot of money to keep up.
And earlier I said that we had sent out that information, but it hadn't. We have sent that information.
Yeah, we have, we have it now, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I suspect that parking, transit and staffing will all be things that you'll hear more from us about through the budget development process. All right, so wrapping up, again, revenues and expenses are tracking as we would expect. We'll continue to monitor that through the rest of this fiscal year and see if the appropriation of ARPA funds in both the general fund and transit will be needed. Hopefully that's not the case, and if so, that will free those up for something else. Again, personnel costs will likely be a significant factor in part because of the information that we've already seen about living wage in the next develop, budget development process. And finally, we will do a third quarter financial report alongside the proposed budget in And I think that is my last one.
As we, as we use this as a launchpad into the conversations around the budget this year, I just wanted to name that the new living wage is 2010 an hour, and that is based on the four-year housing cost in Buncombe County. So with that in mind, we knew the 2018 numbers of housing were falling out of that equation while the 22 numbers were jumping in. We also know that when people get pushed farther and farther away from resources, we have to subsidize parking and bigger roads instead of housing close to resources. And that is an added cost for people in our community. It addresses air quality and quality of life. So it's part of a bigger issue, but if we can't set that example, then we're going to be behind again. So I know there's a lot of folks asking for us to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our employees so that we can recruit and retain the best and provide good services. And it's going to be hard. So I just encourage everyone to follow along the conversation and push us to continue to do good work.
And hopefully we'll be able to tackle some of this discussion at our upcoming retreat.
All right, well, if there are no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Next, we'll have Jade Dundas. Nope, not that one. Yeah, no, not that one.
Good evening, mayor and council, Jade Dundas, Capital Projects Director. I'll try to be as quick as possible through this. Really, we're just highlighting, as we, as mentioned before, we were coming to council in a quarterly, on a quarterly basis to update you on project progress and kind of provide some highlights on upcoming council actions and other activities surrounding projects. Key takeaways, public engagement remains a top priority for the capital construction projects on all fronts. Project budgets have increased due to rising costs and scope changes. Projects highlighted today will require councils for, uh, action to authorize contracts in order to maintain project budgets and schedule. Not all of them will, but there's certainly a, a highlight of this presentation. And then just to kind of demonstrate the workload right now, we currently have 40 projects that are either in design or under construction. And then the 2016 bond projects, I know you hear me say this almost every time I'm up here, is we're, we're shooting for that income, having everything covered by summer of 2023. First project I'll mention is a Vermont sidewalk replacement. The highlight here is that we are going to start activity on Vermont Street next week. The replacement of this pro, this Scott project scope is a replacement sidewalk from Haywood Road to Only Road. This has been a project that has been in development for a long time. And it has been working with the public. We have gone through various scenarios for sidewalk, the construction here. Really, the sidewalk that we'll reconstruct is essentially what is there today, but it does, it is, does have an impact on trees. We are also making provisions to try to minimize that impact on the trees that will be left on the site. This is just a demonstration, and we'll read through this, of all the public engagement that's taken place on this project over the last couple of years. I, I would highlight that this is actually an article here from 1997. A lot of the conversation was happening in 1997 is very similar to what's been happening over the last, last couple of years. And then the, the real focus of, of the activity for this project has been on the trees. We have done an assessment of the health of the trees. There are 32 existing trees, 11 of those trees due to their health impacts or, or the inability to build a compliant sidewalk around them. 11 of them will be removed. New trees that would be planted, the trees that will be replacing the 11 trees, there's 33 in count. They are of a different species, it's smaller in canopy, overall canopy, but there's more of them. So the total project ends with 54 trees versus 32 that are there now. And at maturity, very, very important to, to recognize at maturity, we're, the, the estimates are that the canopy of these trees, the 54 trees will have increased by 2,249 square feet. Again, the, the upcoming process here is that we will begin the removal of the 11 trees on February, February 21st, so next Tuesday. There are, there has been engagement today with the regular project engagement. We do this for resurfacing and other projects with the notices today to notify the, the residents along this street that they will have to be, have their cars moved out of this, out of this area on the 21st. That's today's seven-day notice period. And the parking restrictions, again, will be enforced through towing. This is a typical action for us on our, on our projects, resurfacing and various others. And then in this, later in the spring, we'll get a contract for construction of the actual sidewalk. Downtown Public Restrooms is a project that we've been considering for a few years, recent, over the last couple of years, we've gotten funding through the ARPA federal grants. Project scope is to replace a free, a place of freestanding restroom in downtown Asheville and support the, the improvements to the area that were around the park. There would be a lot of disturbance in that area connecting to utilities and so forth. So there's an associated area improvement as well. Design selection is underway. Design award will be in March 2023. And then construction will be winter 2023 through the summer. There's lead time is, I, we, we'll make an actual selection on the unit that's being replaced there. There, there's considerations for the lead time of those units. And then these, this is also a complicated downtown construction project, and we, we're just trying to schedule all of our projects, including the bonds, which I, bond projects, which I'd mentioned.
Do, you showed us a picture of a Portland Lou. Is it determined that it will be a Portland Lou? You're just, this is just an example.
That's right, yes. This is a Portland Lou. And we are going to, I mean, that's one of the, the nuances of the bid is that we'll bid a Portland Lou or equal or something to that, of that nature, some freestanding unit. But we need to be specific enough that we're not going to, that there, this, the beauty of this, these types of units is they are manufactured off-site, they're put on a truck and they're delivered to the site and they're just, you build the utilities and the pad and then you place them. We want to make sure that this is, you know, we have a unit that's designed to withstand vandalism and, and so we're, we're going to specify around those type of expectations for the unit.
I don't know if beauty is the right word, but.
Noted. This is the site that we're developing. This is on the south side of the Rankin Street Garage. This is a site that has been, we considered half, about half a dozen sites downtown. This one is existing, uh, port of toilet, toilet is there. It is, it's fairly remote with regard to like building entrances and whatnot. But there will be downcount, continued engagement through the devout development groups, our staff, CAPE, and then Capital Projects to work on, helping people to understand the location and also the, the aspects of project delivery. Memorial Stadium is, is just more or less an update. We are building as we, we came to council in August of last year, I believe it was, and, and with a scope of work. It's a six-lane track, new restroom, remove bleachers, improve playground and expand walking trails and update surfacing. We have moved forward with that design and it is anticipated to bid in, actually, this is one, I, I need to make a change here. This will be a bid in March. The February 2023 date is in there. I got information, new information this morning, so that'll bid next month. The construction will, will take a year, May 23 through May 24. The budget, we, we, we went through that budget last spring with council, $4 million anticipated. And then the public engagement, this is just a, an overview of the things that have let, happened last spring through the summer and into last fall to get us to develop this scope. This is the rendering of all those, of all those scope items. And we came to council in August with a, an idea of what the, what the, what the bathroom would look like. Again, this is a rendering, but it's very much in this form. This, this picture shows behind because the bathroom would be located in, in this area. This shows bleachers, but these would be removable bleachers temporary setup for events. Grant Center is moving along. Update on this one is indoor gymnasium, indoor courts and gymnasium, outdoor sports courts, swimming pool, meeting rooms, solar ray. This project is, is really going pretty smoothly for us. And it's anticipated for groundbreak, or I'm sorry, groundbreaking was April 28, or 2022, and we're estimating, we're anticipating ribbon cutting June, May or June of, of 2023. So if you haven't been by that site, it's, it's really changed. This is another site that really changes every day, Broadway Public Safety Station, Three Bay Fire Station, Emergency Operations Center, Police Substation, the Porton Lead Silver Certification of this facility, real close to gold. So I think we're, we're evaluating opportunities to get that to gold, if I'm not mistaken.
Jade, on that one, I've noticed that the construction crew has taken over the whole sidewalk and I, I'm a little concerned about that because that's hard. It's a big deal to kind of get to the other, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Or maybe it sounds like it's on your radar.
So it, it is, and I was out on the site today, I drove by the site, the, we, they have blocked the sidewalk on the ends of the block. So it's, it's not accessible to, uh, from either end, we're routing traffic around, pedestrian traffic around that site because of the activity on the site.
I mean, is there a way to not, I know that's been a big discussion in our city when we have construction projects, trying not to take out the, I mean, because you can't, if you walk in the street, it's very dangerous.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So the, the route is, is, is across the street and around, but we understand, I will, I'll go back to staff and, and see how long that they're going to have. I do, I do know that there are trucks, there's obviously one in the, in the picture here. So we'll, we'll definitely evaluate.
For example.
Yeah. One important note here is the contractor are, they're, they're trying to catch up on the schedule. They're working seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we're hoping to have this completed in May and occupancy and fire operation, or fire and police operations out of this by June of 2023 as well. And then I'm going to hand this over to Jessica and then I'll come back up here to finish.
Good evening. Just a quick update on one of our projects for bicycle facilities, College and Patton Downtown Bike Lanes. We are looking to install protected bike lanes on College and Patton Downtown. In the graphic here below, the green lines represent the proposed project, the red lines represent existing bicycle facilities. We are taking a step back and we will be conducting additional public engagement, particularly with some of the downtown stakeholders. We do have an approved project budget in our CIP from FY 2022 of $100,000. And after we complete our public engagement, hopefully this spring, the next step would be to move forward with issuing a bid and then coming back to council for award of a contract. This is a brief summary of the public engagement that we have done. We started back in about February of 2022. We've had a series of virtual meetings, walking tours, several, several instances of We've had a series of virtual meetings, walking tours, several, several instances of going before the Downtown Commission, Multimodal Commission, Downtown Association, et cetera. We had some more one-on-one kinds of meetings with stakeholders last fall, and most recently, we had meetings with the Public Space Management Committee and the Downtown Commission. We also had, and a few weeks ago, a meeting with some of the downtown business owners to discuss additional options, and, and that's when we decided we'd have a little bit more public engagement. Any questions? Give it back to Jade.
And just to conclude, this is a, not an exhaustive list by any means of the upcoming council actions, but we are gonna be pretty active in front of council over the next several months. Just trying to highlight some of the bond completion work that we'll be doing. Memorial Stadium is on here, I had it on here twice, as a matter of fact, that's, I'm sorry. And then the Shiloh sidewalks, some of the sidewalk projects that we're going to be, uh, having in front of council in the next several months as well. So, with that, um, just, I'll conclude. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thanks for your hard work, it's a lot.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
That's an exciting update, a lot of things happening.
All right, so Mayor, this concludes the manager's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Council, we're going to move on to the public hearings portion of our agenda. Somebody tell Will. Just kidding. Okay, your first item is a consideration of a resolution to close an unopened right-of-way connecting to the east side of Buncombe Street between Commerce Street and Aston Street, and Jessica Morris is back to talk to us about this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Central United Methodist Church of Asheville has petitioned for this closure. The church owns the properties at twenty-seven Church Street and thirty-two Buncombe Street. This unopened right-of-way connects to the east side of Buncombe Street and currently functions as the driveway into the church's private parking lot. This graphic shows the County Cox Avenue Garage is on the left side, Buncombe Street is running more or less north-south, and the area in orange is the proposed closure. And as I mentioned, it does already sort of serve as their driveway into their parking facility. The Technical Review Committee and the Multimodal Commission have met and reviewed this requested closure. Both group, both groups unanimously recommended approval. And our proposed motion is to permanently close an unopened right-of-way connecting to the east side of Buncombe Street between Commerce Street and Aston Street associated with the Central United Methodist Church. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Do you, anyone have any questions?
No, seems very simple, and I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready.
Well, let me first open the public hearing and close it, because no one has signed up to speak on this. Okay, please.
I'll make a motion to permanently close an unopened right-of-way connecting to the east side of Buncombe Street between Commerce Street and Aston Street associated with Central United Methodist Church.
Oh, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next item has two parts. We're talking about one fifty-seven New Lester Highway. First is a consideration of a resolution to consider approving a land use incentive grant to Cohen S. Ray Development Group for one hundred and forty-one residential units at one fifty-seven New Lester Highway. And then the second part of this will be the zoning piece, so Sasha Vertenski is gonna talk to us about the Luigi grant, and then, there's Will in the back already, so he'll talk to us about zoning.
Thank you, Mayor, we decided to skip the stairwell.
Right, getting locked in stairwell last time, that was.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Council members. I'm Sasha Vertenski, affordable housing officer, and I'm here to present this land use incentive grant request tonight for one fifty-seven New Lester Highway. So this project is about a hundred and forty-one units, and they are committing twenty percent of their units to be affordable for thirty years at eighty percent AMI, area median income or below. They're also bringing some other benefits, including rental assistance, housing for the homeless by name list, energy efficiency, and green building certification and universal design. And with all of these things, they qualify for sixteen years of taxes paid back in form of a grant. Again, so a hundred and forty-one apartments, housing represents a hundred percent of all rentable square footage. The requirement for this program is at least seventy percent, and that's why we talk about that. It's on four point seven acres of land, and the estimated value after construction is twenty-six and a half million dollars. And the development is intended to serve those at fifty-five or older, as defined by the Fair Housing Act, and prospective residents will be capable of living independently, and there'll be planned onsite activities catering to that age group. Again, twenty percent of those units, twenty-nine rental apartments will be affordable for thirty years, so that's above and beyond our twenty-year standard. That, you have to do at least twenty years to be into the program, so they're offering ten more years. The unit mix is fifteen one-bedroom units and fourteen two-bedroom units, and for the hundred and twelve market rate units, tenants will need to earn two and a half times, you know, the scheduled rents or demonstrate sufficient assets so they're not rent burdened. And again, the twenty-nine affordable units will restrict occupancy, and rents will be set at eighty percent of area median income. So here's just a quick picture of project location on New Lester Highway. There are two parcels of vacant land currently. Here's an exterior elevation, Will will talk a lot more about this in the next piece of the hearing. Just a quick summary of the points, how they break down, twenty percent of the units being affordable, eighty percent gets you twenty points, that's our baseline to be in the program. Thirty years, because that's an extra ten years, gets an additional ten points. Ten percent of total units accept rental assistance, which is five points. Housing, one person from the homeless by name list is another five points. Their location, they're one mile from a job or urban center, which is, you know, around Haywood and Patton Avenue, and they're also less than a half mile from a transit amenity, it's close to a full, full-service grocery store. They have committed to energy efficiency items and green building certification, and twenty percent of the units will have universal design, and that's how we get to the total of eighty points, or sixteen years granted. So here's all the numbers. So currently, we have two parcels, and their current tax value is three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, and they're paying taxes, taxes of approximately twelve hundred seventy-six dollars a year. Under the estimated twenty-six and a half million post-completion value, the annual city property tax will be approximately a hundred and six thousand, not, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. And then the difference is a hundred and five thousand, five hundred nineteen, which would be granted back to the property owner annually after payment for sixteen years. So when we multiply by sixteen, the total grant value would be one point six million, eight hundred and eight, or eighty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-nine, which is about fifty-eight thousand per unit, which is under our eighty thousand threshold in the policy. And then after year sixteen, the city will start receiving the full tax value of the property. During the program, they do pay the actual, you know, the original taxes on that land, they continue to pay that value. Housing and Community Development Committee reviewed the request on February eighth and voted three, three zero in favor of the land use incentive grant request, and this morning, the Policy Finance and Human Resources Committee reviewed the request and voted three zero in favor of it as well. And so staff is recommending approval of this Luigi land use incentive grant application. And that concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
I don't want to ask any questions, just, I just want to say that this is a project that we need sorely here in Asheville. We have very little housing for fifty-five and older, and I am so happy to see that, and I'm looking forward to it, towards completion.
Since we split this up into two parts, right now we're looking at whether or not we use taxpayer dollars to essentially put in place what is a tool that works like a rent cap, to keep it affordable for a long period of time. To keep on mission, I gotta ask, as I did earlier today, and I do with every residential development, we have goals around carbon reduction and also around neighborhood resiliency. So in addition to adding my question about what's the plan for renewable energies for this neighborhood and the people who live here, but also I'm adding to my regular question about this, how does the design, and we may get into some of the zoning, prohibit or allow future use for something like solar? Because I know what I've, what I've learned through this process, and this is for the public, I know I'm just, it sounds like I'm blathering here, but we're finding that buildings are designed with air conditioning units, you can't put renewable energy on top. And that means that with, when the utility continues to go up and up and up, it makes housing less affordable. So I'm looking for affordability, for resiliency, for, for the long-term health and well-being of these new neighbors or the people who move into this location.
Sure, and I'd be happy to let the developer address that question. I know this morning he talked about looking at, they haven't started their final designs yet, right, so their entitlement portion, so they could address that or.
And the second thing is because these are taxpayer-funded units, we talked about connectivity, and this is on a transit line, that road is really intense, and I use that transit line. So when we're talking about folks being able to access the resources close by jobs, groceries, et cetera, just making sure that there is a sidewalk in place. But the other concern I have, because this keeps coming up, is the percentage of affordability and why we don't just go ahead and make all of our units a hundred percent voucher accepting when we subsidize them. So why not just allow the development as used by right, if we're gonna allow the market to help us control rents, and then use these tax dollars instead to invest in other resources like the land trust? So I think this is part of a conversation we're all having, I'm listening to the housing, community development conversations around this, it's not just the percentage, but also vouchers. Why would we prohibit people from accessing these units if we're just gonna do, say, fifty percent?
And that, I think, was rhetorical, and not for you necessarily.
It's not like an answer, it makes it hard for me to support something when I, I see that we're letting use tax dollars, but not for everybody who needs them.
Yeah, and I think, couple ways to do this, H, maybe you guys want to speak to what HCD is doing, but, 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 you know, we have this Luigi policy, so I think we'd, you'd be talking about changing the policy, right?
So I'll share a little.
That is on the work plan this year.
Yeah, I chair the Housing Committee, Community Development Committee, so we are, we're on task with this, we're already expecting to explore this policy and the HTF in the coming months with items like this on the list, you know, and to Councilwoman Roni's point, she is consistent in asking how we can get better environmental components in these projects, and perhaps when we look at the rubric and the scoring, we can weigh that in. But just for general information, you know, we, we would love to require affordability and all of these things, but the state actually ties our hands on some of this, and other states have better programs, but if you're not familiar with how it works here, we can't make people include affordable housing by law. So what we're doing here is the best next tool we have, which is saying, really all you pay us every year is property tax, so if you pay us and we write you a check back, you know, can we work with something to get some affordability baked in? And we really don't have too many more tools than that, so this is our best tool, it's great that it's being used so much, because it's just really becoming used in the last few years, but to Councilwoman's concerns, we probably do need to review it, tweak it a little here and there, but it's still our best tool. And HCD did hear this and approved it unanimously last week.
Right, so, so inclusionary zoning is not allowed yet in North Carolina, but we can incentivize it. So, I mean, I think the, the balance has always been how restrictive should the Luigi incentive be to the, you know, the tipping point of no one uses it, and then we get nothing from it, versus, you know, is it, is it worthwhile to subsidize, to, you know, you see the number, it's a large number, one point six million and change over, over the period of, of affordability, to get twenty-nine units every year at eighty percent of AMI? So, I mean, I think it's appropriate to ask the question, does that make financial sense? Or, or do we let projects like this go through without any affordability component, collect the property taxes, and do something else with that money over that period of time? The, you know, so.
I would layer in too.
Yeah, because the number's big, the number, the subsidy is large, and, and so you do
need to, I do think it's appropriate, we need to be asking this question, is this the right way to do this?
Well, I would reflect too, a little bit on how our performance has been as the public body, spending those dollars, you know, we're, we've used similar amounts to buy a piece of land, that in the end wasn't enough to even create the first unit, so.
Right.
It's a lot to discuss, and I think, I'll remind us too, that, you know, as we're reviewing the boards and commissions process and policies and how we operate them, this HCD is the pilot for this program, and we're working hand in hand, we're bringing in the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, we've, we've got the, we're sending tasks back to discuss these things, so we're having a very open discussion about it, and if you're interested in these items, you could follow along with AHAC and HCD as they discourse over the next few months.
Yeah, and, I mean, because to your point, you know, one point six million dollars, if you, if, you know, if you're a developer already doing an age-restricted project fifty-five, I mean, and you're talking about a buy-right channel for multifamily housing as an alternative, and then we turn around and say, you know, we're gonna use those kinds of monies for a tax credit, tax credit, you know, for properties, affordable housing, that really can leverage more affordability.
Right, and so, and I said this earlier today, when I'm talking about affordability, it's transportation, access to food, housing, obviously childcare and utilities, so I'm looking at a whole affordability package, and we're talking about using taxpayer dollars. So I want to see deeper affordability, and I want a hundred percent of the vouchers, that's, that's our policy. I just hope we can revisit that.
And if I could just add a couple pieces of information, one is, and it came up this morning, I didn't get a chance to say anything, but for years, this policy wasn't used, and it was when, Janice Ashley and I have talked about this a bunch, it's when the point structure was changed four, four years ago, four or five years ago, that that's, all of a sudden, it actually started to make economic sense for developers. So I think that's actually what changed, I think, lost my other point, but I think the developer could also speak to some of this, like, what does it take to make affordability? Oh, my other point was, as we all know, is that costs have just continued to go up, so it is a big amount overall, but it, being spread over twenty years, kind of spreads that pain, if you will, for us, in terms of subsidizing twenty-nine units for a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, I think, I'm looking at some of our high-impact sites, as we call them, I think, and we're not achieving the fifty and, fifty thousand dollars per unit there, so in some ways, without us having to own it, manage it, improve it, maintain it, et cetera, the private market is creating for us what we cannot do for ourselves.
And if I could add, I believe through HCD committee, we are going to look at all of our affordable housing tools and assess, you know, number one, do the policy make sense, are we having the kind of impact, and are we generating enough units through that tool, and what needs to be tweaked or added or, or not do anymore, because it's not, it's just not having the impact. You know, it's cost benefit. Are we paying out too much and not getting the desired benefit?
Part of that too, is we've requested some, and we're gonna get to this later in the year, but how to look twenty years out, you know, if we've got ten of these projects we've approved in the last four years, when is that tax coming back into the community, and when can it again create more affordability? So there's a whole broader picture we're getting at, and luckily we have Sasha now, who's doing a bang-up job.
Okay, we, any other questions or comments? We've got one person signed up to speak, so, good for you. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing, we, folks, if you're signed up to speak, again, you'll have three minutes, watch the lights on the lectern. The first person signed up to speak is Dave, or the only person signed up to speak is David
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. This is not my project. I am going through this process on another project, and I, so I've been looking at the numbers very closely, and I wanted to put them a little bit in perspective, so the city is contemplating providing a hundred thousand dollar grant to the project annually for twenty-nine units. That works out to about three thousand five hundred dollars per unit. In the homelessness report, the consultant recommended two hundred rehousing units, should be built by the city at a cost of thirteen thousand per unit per year.
That was the annual cost to operate each unit?
Okay, so that's just the operating of the, the unit, so, or, so this is three thousand five hundred dollars per year for a similar unit. The other thing is, based on the book I read on homelessness, the cost of a homeless person is between thirty to a hundred thousand per year. This cost is a lot lower than that, so that's, I think the economics are actually quite favorable to the city for housing a person.
On this project, you're saying? And I'm sorry, we, we, we have a malfunctioning.
Yeah, so if I have a few more minutes, yeah, the cost to the city, and I don't know, like, for the vouchers, let's say it's 100% vouchers. I don't know who pays for the actual voucher, whether it's HUD, the federal government. But the cost of the city for each of these units for a voucher holder is $3,500, which I think we have 100 vouchers that are unused. And I think each one of those voucher holders that's sitting in a shelter costs us significantly more. Although I realize there's a cost that the city's evaluating, and there's a thought that maybe that money would be better put in the fund. But I think that this is probably the most cost-effective way that the city can house someone in the city because it's $3,500 per person per year, which is, I think, why this program was set up, because it's actually a very good deal to the city, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have anyone else signed up to speak under the side. I'm just checking. So I'll close the public hearing. Council, do I have?
Oh.
Yeah, yes, but I still don't have any more. Yeah, under both, yeah. So, but we're, do you want us to vote now and do the zoning second?
You can, you do need to vote on these separately. So we can certainly go ahead right now and vote on the Luigi.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm making a motion to adopt City Council to approve the land use incentive grant application for the Cohenes Re-Development Group at 157 New Lester Highway.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Folks, if anybody wants to speak on any of these items, please step out into the hall and sign up at the desk, and they will put your name on the list of folks that would like to speak. Now we're going to hear the zoning piece of this one.
Policy-wise, we're doing this because we have a policy that says you have to be granted your Luigi before you can go through your. But we may want to look at that, too.
That is a good reminder, because I'm sitting here, like, doing the math.
I'd like to see the project.
I feel a little confused, but thanks.
Well, and we used to do them on separate nights, I think.
Yeah.
Good evening. Will Tom, Close of Planning and Urban Design. I'll be presenting the conditional zoning petition for this project at 157 New Lester Highway. As demonstrated earlier, site location here on New Lester, about a mile or so west up New Lester Highway from Patton Avenue. The existing zoning is a combination of RM16 and highway business. Due to the size of the project, a rezoning to the residential expansion conditional zone is required. Future land use across the two parcels is a combination of residential neighborhood and urban corridor, as shown in the city's comprehensive plan. No change in that is required. So the site plan, as laid out here, shows a new four- and five-story multifamily building, 141 residential units, as mentioned earlier, 28 are affordable, approximately 150 parking spaces. Some of those exact numbers are still being worked out, but the project will provide the minimum number of spaces, which is 141. Access to the project is often existing curb cut on New Lester, so it'll be shared with the property to the south. No new sidewalks are proposed on New Lester Highway. There is already a city project planned to build sidewalks along that segment of road. So the project will be required, though, to pay a fee in lieu for that area. Five-foot-wide sidewalks are proposed internal to the site. Landscaping includes street trees, parking lot, building impact, and property line buffers required. Open space required at 20%, of the site, and then tree canopy preservation standards, which are met through onsite preservation of trees. And just landscape plan showing the required street trees along New Lester Highway, and then elements such as the parking and building impact screening located throughout the site. And the building elevations for the project, the bottom slide shows the five-story building, which will be facing on New Lester Highway. And then the rear elevation, number three here, is kind of facing internal to the site, to the parking lot. And you kind of see how that side elevation shows how the building is built into that pretty significant slope off New Lester Highway. So as mentioned earlier, 20% of the units are affordable. Half of those will accept vouchers. There are a few technical modifications that the project is seeking as part of the conditional zoning process, one of which is a modification for no landscape buffer along the western property boundary, where a type A 20-foot-wide buffer would typically be required. Also, a modification for five-foot-wide sidewalks internal to the site instead of the required 10-foot-wide standard, and that there are no bike lanes into the development, as there are no bike lanes currently or other facilities on New Lester Highway. Project was approved with conditions at the November 21st Technical Review Committee, and was also approved with conditions at the December 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Those conditions are mostly removing the stated number of parking spaces in the project conditions documents. So they'll just be required to provide the minimum as required in the UDO. And then also a condition just stating, for the record, that the project will pay fee in lieu for the sidewalk along New Lester Highway, since the city has already received funding to build one along that segment. So regarding the project's consistency with the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, it is consistent with the two different future land use designations of the site, which are residential neighborhood, which is described as benefiting from more housing diversity, such as accessory apartments, duplexes, and other types of small-scale infill housing. And also the urban corridor future land use talks about redevelopment in the form of mixed-use residential, commercial, and office uses that place emphasis on pedestrian-friendly amenities and infrastructure. Project also supports a number of goals in the plan, such as providing infill development in targeted growth areas, increasing the supply of housing, including affordable housing, and leveraging city resources for the development and maintenance of subsidized housing, including senior housing. Therefore, staff concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends approval of the proposed conditional zoning. And I'm glad to answer any questions you all may have.
So, yeah, this is the part where I ask about renewable energy. And adding to that, what's the future design? And I realize that that question may be for the developer.
Yeah, I will pass it off to them. I don't know what they're thinking in regards to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We were just chatting up here. There, we do believe there's a bus, there's a bus route that runs along there. Is there a bus stop or a bus shelter run that part?
I'm trying to recall. There's not one in the vicinity of the project site. I know there's one further down, closer to Patton Avenue. I can't think where the closest one on Lester Highway is, though.
We could ask for one. It's a large.
Yeah, I was just trying to picture it in my mind, because I think that angle's on the corner is the closest, right?
I think so. So that's maybe three-quarters of a mile to the south.
It's such a dangerous road, too, at least speed-wise.
Well, now, remember, though, we'll have the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we need to have the developer answer that.
Well, and just a question for staff real quick, because we think that the average installation cost of a bus stop at our current design is about 10,000. That might be pre-COVID, pre-inflation, pre-construction costs.
We'd have to check.
We'd have to check.
Yeah, if we're talking about accessibility and it's a five-foot sidewalk, I mean, that's a long way to go on that really busy road with a really narrow sidewalk. I think it would be worth asking, like, if we're talking about it being good zoning.
Well, and I, you know, I see we have transportation folks here, but it might be that it's not even a safe place to have a bus stop or something on that fast highway. It's there, I'm just not sure. But it could be interior to the project, perhaps, or I'm not sure.
We have plenty of, I've used bus stops that are on the side of the highway. So we have plenty that don't have sidewalks or ADA clients.
Looks like there are a couple of stops on your Oak Hill Drive, maybe a quarter mile south, according to Google. I think the sidewalk, and I don't, I can't recall exactly. The project's not as fresh in my mind as I would like. But the sidewalk, I think, on New Lester Highway is going to be wider than five feet. That's the city-led portion. The five feet mentioned in this is internal to the site. I believe the one along New Lester Highway will be a little bit wider than that. It should have a planting buffer as well to provide some relief from the traffic. But your point is well-taken about that, New Lester Highway not being a very overall safe road.
I'd be curious to hear if the developer's interested in installing a bus station or shelter.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, members of the audience. Thank you for the time. My name is Derek Allen. I'm the attorney for the developer, Cohenesri. I do have Clark Mills here from Cohenesri, as well as Warren Sugg, who's from Civil Design Concepts, who is our engineer. I'll try to answer some of the questions that I've heard. Yes, you're correct, the sidewalks are, Will is correct. The sidewalks are five feet internal to the site. And whatever the city does, that's what will happen on New Lester Highway. And we are putting money in fee in lieu there, so we're paying our fair share of that. If it includes a bus stop, it includes a bus stop. I think that's a city choice. So if you want to put one along there, I think that's, that works. There is a pretty significant grade, and it is, the speeds are hot coming through there. But if you can make it work, I think that's great, and you can use the fee in lieu money for that. I did hear some questions about renewable energy. This project is intended to be age-restricted, 55-plus. There are a number of different HUD and other grants that we're applying for. As part of those, there's a renewable energy package that goes with it, including electric charging stations as well as solar. We will have solar on the cutoff, on the lights for the parking lot. But the other two are waiting on grants to see what that happens. There's a number of other grants that go with that application for the age-restricted piece. So that's the answer to that question. We do think it's important, but as we do the math going through the Luigi, there's an affordability trade-off with sustainability. And so we're constantly working on that math. And I will personally make myself available for any further discussions about the Luigi rewrite and the points rewrite. I'm happy to do that. I see a lot of these projects come through, and we look at it every single time to see if it makes any sense and what's the right approach for, for the project. We think this is a great project. It's 141 units, age-restricted, and a place that makes sense. I'd like to see more of these projects coming through. They're very much infill. We're seeing a lot of projects getting pushed out to the county. I don't think that helps the issues that we're dealing with here, to see one inside of the state limits along this corridor. I think it's a great thing for all of us. I'm happy to answer any questions about the entitlements piece. Warren can answer questions about the engineering of the site plan. And in terms of programming, Clark can answer those questions. Thank you.
Does anybody know the estimated fee in lieu? Is it enough to cover a bus? I don't see any math.
I'm not in this department anymore, but I think the sidewalk fee in lieu goes into a fund. It's a lot, you know, four sidewalks in that area. Bus stops are, in my mind, are a different line item.
Okay, so we can't necessarily go to a bus stop if it's a sidewalk fee in there?
I would, I would want a transportation staff person to say.
So you're wanting to figure out how to.
I'm just curious, I'm just trying to figure out if the bus stop is an option. The fee in lieu would suggest that because these, the applicant can't meet the code as is, they're going to pay a fee into a fund, and that fund thereby could pay for a bus station, but, or bus shelter. But I'm not sure that that's really what we're asking either.
What are you asking, Ken?
Well, I think he got asked to come up as a person on transportation.
What we can ask, we can ask the developer if they would agree as a condition to add the bus stop. Is that what we're asking?
I'm not sure what we're asking, Ken, though.
Ken, what are we asking?
Transportation person.
We just wanted to see your red tie for anxiety.
I'll come back.
Well, do you know, I mean, do you know the approximate cost of a bus shelter?
I'd rather not say it tonight. It was what's been happening since COVID. The prices seem to change almost daily. But that's, so I'd rather pass on that, but I can find out for you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So I think the question's really back to the developer and whether or not they're interested in installing a bus shelter.
This is my favorite part, when we do the sausage-making, real time.
I'm going to borrow Ken's answer, and not without knowing what the numbers are. I don't think we can commit to that. So that's the answer, as we sit here today.
Yeah.
All right, so we think the bus stop is within a quarter mile of the site. Is that what we determined? Maggie's nodding. Do you know? Yeah, I thought somebody said that as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch this and was more prepared, because I could look up our GIS layer.
So there's a bus stop to the north and the south on New Lester, maybe about a quarter mile to the north and a quarter mile to the south.
Each direction, okay.
So, yeah, so whether it's redundant or not to have one here, I'm not really sure.
Well, that would make me worry a little bit about whether transit would support it.
That's the thing, like, then you might find that you're stopping three times in a three-quarter mile stretch, and it's too much for traffic. So that's really, okay. So going forward, I'll ask this question earlier on in the process.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
I have a logistics question. So on our printed agenda, we have agreements, like, this is what we're going to talk about. It says we have two public hearings about this, but there were sign-ups for the public hearing, but we've already closed the public hearing, though we didn't formally close the public hearing. Can we adhere to the two people who signed up and got room?
Do we have two people that?
We did, but then I saw names getting added and removed, and it says now this is closed. Already had the public hearing, so do we need to?
I heard that it was for both. We should hear both, I think.
I was out there, it was about zoning. The gentleman who was asking about zoning was up.
That's fine.
Let's do it.
So magical person who's out there is putting a person's name on the list. Sarah, go ahead and put the person's. Okay, I'll, okay, got it. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, we'll open the public hearing on the zoning piece, and I have one person signed up to speak, Bill Loftus.
Thank you, and this may have been resolved. When I was hearing the presentation, transit came in really late on this game. There, I'm not sure there's a sidewalk. We are not sure there's a bus stop. There's a bus that drives down the highway, but it's a busy highway, and people have to walk, what, a quarter of a mile to get to a stop? There are going to be 300 or 400 people in this facility. You look at the plan, and it's all cars. Guess what? There's only going to be cars there if we treat it this way. My call to the process is get involved in transit at the beginning of the game, not at the last moment. Thank you.
All right, just to be clear, there is, the city is building a sidewalk. And so there will be a sidewalk there. The developer is paying for the portion that abuts their property.
And we do usually, I mean, we put transit at the front of our conversations based on its proximity. There's another layer of this, is that if you, if you have bus stops happening so, in such close proximity, it can throw off the route. So this is really easy to Google. It's, it says that according, I can get off at the Johnston Boulevard Oakmont Terrace, and it's eight tenths of a mile walk. But I do think that there's something to be said for, like, it depends on what time of day. So if I get an earlier bus than right now, then I can get off and walk about a quarter of a mile. But we don't do transit well enough yet for people who need to use the bus late at night. So it's not just proximity at certain times of day. This is why we need 10:00 p.m. bus service, so that we can do good planning with our land use.
It's a bit, a little bit about this location, too. I was noticing when we do the Luigi rubrics and points, we usually see points in there for adjacency to transit stops. And I didn't see it in this list, and this is what made us kind of converse up here. But normally, we do see this right at the front end. But this particular area of town, Lester Highway, just does not, it does not have enough frequency. It doesn't have enough hours, et cetera.
So this is good food for thought for next time. Sometimes these projects, staff's already worked out something about putting in a bus stop. And so that all, sometimes is already baked in. So I assume somebody looked at that with regard to this site. That person's just not sitting here in this room right now to come run up here and tell us what they already looked at. So, but, so that's helpful if we have that, have that information. All right, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the side. Maggie, that's about the buzz. Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll do it. I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 157 and 9999 New Leicester Highway from residential multifamily high-density to, and highway business to residential expansion conditional zone, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development.
and, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, provides infill development in targeted growth areas; two, increases the supply of affordable housing in proximity to schools, transit, and parks; and three, promotes the development and availability of affordable and workforce housing. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Council, for our, thank you, for whoever came for this one. We have, item C needs to, I need a motion to continue it to May 23rd, 2023.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sage, Maggie, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will comment that HCD requested, and kind of in conversation with the AHAIC chair, with this developer to ask them to come back later to work on some of these Luigi issues. So just a little information for council. Yeah, just for council, you know, they did this at our request so we could have more conversation around Luigi and its application to this. So appreciations to the developer for willingly doing that.
So under new business, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a funding letter of commitment to the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding the city betterments and aesthetic treatment for the I-26 Connector Project, Sections B and D, and Ken Putnam is going to present the slide.
I believe, mister.
Oh, we're, okay, I have Ken on my agenda. Please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Manheimer, Vice Mayor Kilgore, members of City Council. I'm Ted Figura. I'm Chair of the I-26 Connector Aesthetics Committee. This committee was appointed by City Council in 2018 to work with NC DOT and their consultants and make recommendations back to City Council for aesthetic improvements to the project. Thank you for this opportunity to present the committee's second request for a funding commitment. Ah, there, okay. Our first request in June 2022 was for improvements to Section A. We thank you for that funding. Today's request is for city's commitment to fund improvements to I-26 Connector Sections B and D. NC DOT requires that the city pays the difference in cost for those features it considers above standard grade. The commitment to fund their, these improvements must be made now by the city in order to be included in the request for proposals that will be issued by NC DOT to design and build Sections B and D of the I-26 Connector. This is everything north of and including Haywood Road interchange. Importantly, the city will have till October 2029 to pay for the improvements. This is more than six years away. There, there would be no interest charge by NC DOT on this payment until October 2026. I want to begin with a short overview of the recommendations that the aesthetics committee is asking the City Council to commit to fund. More detail is provided in the committee's report that staff has provided to you. The largest commitment, more than $3.7 million, is for enhancements to the Bowen Bridge, which includes improved lighting, pedestrian safety railings, multi-use path surfaces, and gateway monument pillars at each end of the bridge. This is the committee's highest priority and has also been a high priority for the city. Next in cost is almost $1.5 million for the Haywood Road Bridge and Interchange. More than half of this cost funds tiered retaining walls approaching the bridge, which open up the feel of the bridge and allow for box abutments with a place for artistic medallions to be placed on the bridge. The rest of this request funds improved lighting, pedestrian safety railings, bridge sidewalk treatment, and enhanced medians along Haywood Road. These enhancements, enhancements along the surface of the bridge, costing a little over $600,000, are the committee's second priority. The committee's third priority are the improvements to the proposed Hill Street Bridge and two pedestrian bridges crossing I-240, costing about $300,000. The remaining priorities, each costing under $150,000, include improvements to downtown Patton Avenue, lighting for Greenways and the Riverside Drive multi-use path, and the green colored interstate lighting that you allowed for Section A of the project. Our recommend, our, our recommendation also includes financing the, enhancing the medians on Patton Avenue west of the Bowen Bridge to match those already installed west of Florida Avenue. We're also asking City Council to commit to landscape improvements installed at no cost to the city, but which the city will need to maintain after the interstate is completed. The city would also have an annual lease cost for, for the recommended lighting improvements, and these will be incorporated into the city's existing lease arrangements with Duke Energy. I do want to emphasize to you that this is a once in a lifetime opportunity for the city to protect Asheville's unique character and to enhance the experience of its citizens and of the many visitors to our community. We hope that we see the value of our recommendations and take this opportunity to provide the funds to make them a reality. When the aesthetics committee surveyed the public for their input, we found that the highest areas of concern and the highest level of support for improvements to the I-26 Connector revolved around walkability and bikability. We have made that a focus of our recommendation. The items requiring city funding that improve pedestrian and bike safety and enhance the pedestrian and bicyclist's experience include distinctive surface treatments, distinguishing pedestrian and bicycle lanes on the Bowen Bridge, aesthetically enhanced safety railings on the Bowen, Haywood Road, and Hill Street Bridges to improve the pedestrian experience, and also make it more difficult for anyone to climb over those railings. Planters along the multi-use path on the Bowen Bridge to provide interest in shade along the long walk across that bridge, installed at no cost to the city but requiring city maintenance. Streetlights along Haywood Road and Hill Street Bridge, and better placement of streetlights on the Bowen Bridge. City Council has already funded bridge lighting on the Brevard Road Bridge in Section A of this project, and pedestrian LED lighting embedded into the safety railing on the Bowen Bridge and the two I-240 pedestrian bridges.
Which bridge are we looking at there?
This is the Hill Street Bridge. Streetlights on the Haywood Road Bridge and Hill Street, oh, sorry. Along with the city's Greenways Committee, the aesthetics committee recommends that the city funds lighting along the project's Greenways. City has already agreed to fund these in Section A of the project. The aesthetics committee has also been keenly aware of the need to address past negative outcomes resulting from the original construction of I-240. Our focus here has been on the Hillcrest, Hill Street community, and on West Asheville, including the Burton Street community. While the aesthetics committee has worked with NC DOT to make engineering design improvements that benefit these communities, several items require a city funding commitment. The aesthetic improvements recommended for the Hill Street Bridge, the I-240 pedestrian bridges, and the Haywood Road Bridge will directly contribute to a greater sense of community experience by these neighborhoods and will help reunite neighborhoods divided by the interstate. One of the city's chief goals for the I-26 Connector is expressed in the Schwartz Consulting Group technical memo that was commissioned by the city, is to reclaim the land between the Bowen Bridge and Klingman Avenue for redevelopment as an extension of downtown Asheville. The committee's recommendations for Patton Avenue east of the river support this vision while being sensitive to not spending money on improvements that are likely to be redone as redevelopment occurs. Improvements recommended for Patton Avenue west of the bridge also support this vision, considering that this will become the new gateway entrance to the downtown from the west. The Haywood Road Bridge lies at the gateway to and from urban Asheville for travelers along the interstate. Opening up the feel of the bridge and allowing for iconic medallions to be placed on the bridge abutments comes at a cost. The view shown at the top of this slide is only possible if, if council commits to fully funding our request. The view on the bottom is the standard NC DOT design. We realize that the price tag for all of the improvement, improvements recommended by this committee is not, is not insignificant. We have tried to be prudent in our recommendations, and we feel that funding these improvements can be done in a fiscally responsible way. Because Sections B and D will be built using a design-build contract, the city's cost for these improvements will not change due to inflation once the city has committed to this fixed funding amount. We are also, we are not asking that money be spent in this year's budget or even next year's. The city will have time to develop a plan of finance that can spread out its payments to NC DOT over a multi-year period. This plan of finance should include securing contributions from Buncombe County and the Tourism Development Authority, both of which will benefit from the recommended improvements. The aesthetic improvements that we are asking the city to fund will not only improve the pedestrian and bicyclist's experience and their safety, help remediate previous injustices inflicted on vulnerable neighborhoods, and further the city's vision for extending the downtown westward. We believe that they are also valuable placemaking initiatives that will enrich Asheville's character. This will, this will not only contribute to the quality of life enjoyed by Asheville's citizens, it will add to the attractiveness of our community for tourists. This is particularly true for West Asheville and for the downtown area, including the Bowen Bridge. Therefore, we think that a significant contribution from the TDA to help fund these improvements is entirely appropriate.
One more?
We realize that these, that there are many competing needs that the city is facing. If it is not possible for you to fund the entire recommendation of this committee, we ask that you fund as much of it as possible. However, if council only commits to fund city staff's recommendation, the more open design approaching the Haywood Road Bridge will not be built, and some enhanced treatments to the Haywood Road Bridge sidewalks and Bowen Bridge multi-use path will not be made. Also, the city will need to undertake installation of the Bowen Bridge monument pillars and Riverside Drive Greenway lighting after I-26 is completed, likely at a higher cost. We hope you will see the wisdom of committing to fund the entire amount of nearly $5.9 million requested by the committee. Thank you for consideration of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? We're also gonna see the presentation from staff as well.
Just a big appreciation to you all in the aesthetics committee. I mean, this has been decades in the making, but the committee's been working for, I'm not even sure how many years anymore.
About three or four.
Not that, not that he's counting. We do, we do appreciate it. It's tremendous amount of work and volunteer at that, so we appreciate it.
I will say, thank you so much. I had the opportunity to sit at the table with you for some of these meetings, especially on the Haywood Road corridor. What I heard, but I didn't see explicitly, was the Burton Street recommendation from the President of Neighborhood Association regarding a mural for placemaking because of the impact on Burton Street. But also, the second part of that is to ensure that because of the impact on, on Burton Street and Hillcrest, because of that interstate expansion, that the people impacted benefit from the construction of the project. And I know that's been part of the conversation at the aesthetics committee level, but it wasn't needed explicitly. So I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that is that the Burton Street initiative is going on a separate track. It's mitigation, which means NC DOT is paying the full cost. And we wanted to be respectful of the Burton Street community and, you know, let them make their own recommendations and, you know, it's their future.
Thank you.
Let's ask, let's ask Ken how long he's been working on I-26.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council member. My name is Ken Putnam, and I'm the Transportation Department Director. And did you want me to answer your question?
I'm curious, 20 years? How long have you been working on I-26?
Oh, over 20 years.
Yeah.
So, the key takeaways. The I-26 Connector Project is definitely a transformational project. Its estimated cost is $1.35 billion, and it will improve and realign almost five miles by I-26. Sections B and D will be constructed using the design-build process. And this design-build process, it advantages to us because the cost for the betterments and aesthetics treatments will not be adjusted once the appropriate agreement is signed, including the commitment letter. As Ted has mentioned, the aesthetics committee is recommending the city invest $5.9 million in these aesthetic improvements. And staff is recommending a subset of those recommendations totaling $3.9 million. The staff's recommendation includes all of the aesthetics committee's priorities, the top three that are listed here. And then one other key takeaway is that we're, City Council is being asked to authorize the signature of a commitment letter that includes these improvements. Little bit of background, it's identified as Project I-2513 in NC DOT's State Transportation Improvement Program. It's commonly referred to as the I-26 Connector Project. It begins at I-40 and ends at US 1923, which is also Future I-26 near Broadway Street. And the total length is 4.7 miles. Here's a map that kind of depicts it. The area outlined in green is Section B, and Section D is Riverside Drive, which is just to the west, and it's outlined in that color orange. Section B begins south of the Haywood Road Bridge and ends at the Future I-26. Section D begins, which is Riverside Drive, begins south of Hill Street and ends at Broadway Street. Both sections will be delivered using the design-build method, and that process will begin in early calendar year '23, and it is estimated to take nine months to complete. So the anticipated award date is October 17th, 2023. The funding commitment letter is needed by February 15th. Definitions. The design-build process is defined as a method of project delivery in which one entity, the design-build team, works under a single contract to provide the design, right-of-way acquisition, the utility relocation, and the construction services for one lump sum price. A city betterment, as we defined it here, is an improvement that exceeds NC DOT's standard improvements. For example, a 14-foot versus a 10-foot multi-use transportation path. And then the aesthetic treatment is defined as any treatment, including aesthetic materials, landscaping, and lighting that exceeds NC DOT's standard treatments. There are financial implications. There are numerous competitive needs. There's limited funding sources. The cost won't be adjusted once the agreement is executed. The bicycle and pedestrian betterments are already programmed in the current CIP. The reimbursement procedure begins on the award date, and the time period can be up to six years, with the first three years being interest-free. And then staff is recommending eight of the priorities submitted by the aesthetics committee, including the top three. So, our top priority, the Bowen Bridges. Staff is recommending that the bridgehead monuments and the stamped multi-use path concrete surface be taken off. So our recommendation drops it from $3.8 million to $2.8 million. And then second, the Haywood Road Bridge and Interchange, which is ranked number two, is, staff is recommending that the stamped and colored concrete sidewalks be taken off, and the cost is roughly $500,000. And I apologize for the small print on this, but here's a table that shows all of these costs side by side. And the aesthetics committee, which is in bold down at the, near the bottom, is totals the 5.9. And then the staff's recommendation to the right of that is 3.9. And then when you add in the city betterments, of course, we have 7.3 and 5.4 million respectively. So staff's recommendations, the total revised cost is $5.4 million. We would program it as part of the fiscal year 2024, five-year CIP. And then $1.4 million is already programmed. Staff would then begin coordinated with community partners, including Buncombe County, the Tourism Development Authority, and Metropolitan Planning Organization to try- the Tourism Development Authority, and Metropolitan Planning Organization to try to identify outside funding. And some of the items that are removed could be considered once the project is completed. Again, here's the key takeaways. And then, finally, the suggested motion is for city council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a funding letter of commitment to the NC DOT regarding the betterments and aesthetics treatments for Project I-2513B and D. And with that, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, and Ted is also here.
I'm curious what staff's confidence is in the ability to get some of these other organizations to help fund it. Because I'm inclined to support as much as we can, but we obviously don't know if the county or the TDA could help. But have there been conversations? Is there any confidence?
There is, there's been no conversations to this point in time.
No conversations?
Well, from staff level.
Okay.
Excuse me.
No, I mean, I, I, I think there is strong TDA interest in the aesthetic piece of it. Maybe some of our speakers are gonna talk about that. I don't know. But, yes, I, I do think it's a project that would qualify.
So in some ways, we could say we support the staff's recommendation, but we also support the greater ask if we can find partnerships?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, so I'm just looking at the suggested motion versus what the resolution says. And my understanding is that for purposes of tonight, we, you know, we already have, as was mentioned, set aside capital funding for the 1.4-ish. So that's, you know, we gotta press go on that, and that's in this resolution.
But if Ken will go back one slide.
Yeah, it does, it's so.
That last line.
No slide?
That, no, that's right.
Oh.
You are on the right slide, but that last line is what I'm referring to. So, and this isn't the 7.3, this isn't the full. I'm just wondering if, like, I wanna support everything. I'm feeling inclined to support only what we feel as staff recommended can be absorbed, but I'm just trying to gauge if we feel like, I mean, maybe it's just a two-part motion. We would support all of it if we could find the partners.
Well, I think staff's recommendation is coming from what we think is our best amount of money that can be obligated compared to all the other needs that city council is facing.
So, well, I, right, but, but, so I think what we probably want to do is this resolution, and I'm looking out on my screen here, has the 1.4, and then it has the approximately 4 million. But if we wanted to do the full amount, we would need to add that, add that in, and I think with the direction to find funding partners for, for, so. And so, maybe Brad, just while we're gonna hear, take public comment, maybe take a look at that resolution. If this council wants to go with the full recommendation of the aesthetics committee, how we need to reword this, and probably just that, I'm assuming it's just that last whereas that has a sum, sum of 5.4, we would need to increase that amount.
So, having participated in the Haywood Street part of this the most, but also attending these meetings for years, there was a conversation about making sure that the Hillcrest neighborhood was engaged because there's talk about adding access points and increasing connectivity. But last I heard, that was like put on DOT's plate. Is there an update on how Hillcrest community has been engaged around that additional connectivity?
I know that the DOT has met with the Hillcrest neighborhood, and, and they have been working towards some of the things they'd want. One of the big things that they will still get to choose, because I think they are in the, where a noise wall would be qualified if the community themselves wanted it. But I know that the DOT has been working closely with them, and I, they've met with them at least once.
But I know we worked really closely with the Monford neighborhood to address noise, so I just wanted to make sure that Hillcrest was being addressed and invited to the table as well.
Yes, they are.
Okay. We've got a couple people signed up. Should I go ahead? Anybody have any questions before we move ahead? Okay, we, the first person signed up to speak under this item is Mike Sewell.
Should we just ask everyone how long they've been working on I-26?
A long time. I'm Mike Sewell, I'm the executive director of Ashle on Bikes. I'm here tonight to fully endorse the aesthetics committee's recommendation. Ashle on Bikes, we are dedicated to advancing safe and predictable, dignified active transportation facilities that provide people with a variety of mobility options to connect them to the places that they want to go. We understand that active transportation is a component of affordability and congestion management, and that's been outlined in the Ashle comprehensive plan. In addition, this active transportation, this, the aesthetics package will result in significantly advancing Asheville's active transportation network and address several of the issues of connectivity and access that are outlined in the recently adopted Close the Gap Plan. If these robust active transportations are not included now, it's unlikely they will ever be built because the city simply does not have the capacity to retrofit this project. Our city Asheville, we continue to lead in the state of pedestrian and bicycle collisions. A distinction that our community was recently reminded of once again with the recent deaths of Jason Dean Wyatt and Vernon Bernard Wicker. Both of these people were killed on NC DOT roads commuting, commuting at night. And so, it's noteworthy to address that there were a lot of lighting considerations that were put into the aesthetics committee. On the second page of the letter that I sent you, in paragraph seven, we are recommending that we do away with the traditional bike lanes that are proposed for Riverside Road and go more with a cycle track protected bike facilities. Can I, is this thing fired up? Just to show you, essentially so that we're mirroring what we have done in the River Arts District. The bike lanes that are currently in that plan do not align with federal standards. And, uh, there we go, can I turn it on? There, yeah, yeah. This is working. We know that this sort of type of configuration is working. It's wildly popular in the River Arts District. And we can't build this everywhere, but we can certainly build it in the River corridor. You've got space for vehicular movements, for people on bikes who are 10 minutes late for their meeting at AB Tech, and for the pedestrian who is moving about. It separates the speeds and creates greater connectivity. So, we support it, and I hope you do too.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Hunt? Hold on, Maggie's gonna.
You know that noise.
Yeah, except bring you back, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Manhannan, and Council. I'm Mark Hunt. I'm a former member of Asheville City Council. I, I think most people don't appreciate the hard work and effort that goes in, so I really appreciate your service to the community. I have provided an email to you guys a couple, a day or two ago. It's in printed form here if you want to refer to it. I strongly recommend the inclusion of the $1.9 million recommended by the aesthetics committee that this, is not included in the staff recommendation. And additionally, the, the traditional bike lanes on Riverside Drive would be a mistake. I think there is the opportunity for council to direct staff to urgently see design changes to shift that width over to the multi-use path. I, I want to take the rest of my time to sort of honor the history of this project. This thing extends back 25 years. It started as an austere, intrusive, boring, impactful project on Asheville. Thanks to the work of people going back 25 years, it has transformed dramatically. The most dramatic changes occurred, thanks largely to the work of the Asheville Design Center in the 15-year ago range to get the routing onto the 4B alignment, which was our idea, not DOT's, and return Patton Avenue to an urban boulevard. The design evolved to protect and honor neighborhoods. The design evolved to include bike and pedestrian facilities that DOT was not bringing forward. The design evolved to include the aesthetics that Ted's committee has advocated for as well. And I want to mention some of the people and groups, because much of this work is distant in the rearview mirror now. The, the Design Center I mentioned. North Carolina DOT staff has shown real pragmatism in recent years in adapting this design based on community preferences, particularly DOT board members David Brown and Billy Clark. City council, going back 25 years, has been on the right side and urged this. Julie Mayfield and her leadership has been super important. There was an ad hoc committee formed in 2014 roughly, which I was part of, '13. Julie, Brownie Newman, Holly Jones, Jan Davis, David Brown, Lou Bit, former mayor Lou Bissett. The aesthetics committee work has been incredible. City staff has stepped up and played the role directed by staff to work with DOT to get these improvements. And all of, all of the, the adaptation of this design and this project has taken incredible effort. 30 more seconds, please. That is, that is now coming to a head. And the action you take tonight will be the follow-through in honor all that great work that has gone before, and there has been lots of it. Again, I urge full approval of the money and the Hill Street stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next person to, signed up under this item is Ken, and Ken, help me pronounce your last name.
Dirks.
Dirks. Vice Chair of the aesthetics committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Members of council, one of the things that we looked at during the course of this project was the estimated, was the estimated cost of the recommendations versus the cost of the project. And I think it's important for you to understand that, based on the latest numbers that we've received from NC DOT, what we're asking for tonight, including what the city has already committed to with its betterments, would be less than one-half of 1% of the total construction of this project, which is, the latest estimate is 1.3 billion. It's gonna be one of the largest construction projects in western North Carolina. But the recommendations that we made to you tonight will have a lasting impact on the city, on the visitors to the city, that will, I think, yield the benefits that we hope will come from this project for decades to come. So I urge you, and I certainly understand where Ms. Putnam's coming from, but I urge you to fully fund the recommendations of the committee this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Susan Loftus.
Honorable mayor and city council members, I'm Susan Loftus. I've been working on this project for about six and a half years or so. And just wanted to thank you so much for all the support. Wanted to clarify that I personally, and then several of the other members of our committee, have during the past three years had conversations with TDA members who are very encouraging about the project. So just wanted to reiterate that we think you will receive support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the folks that have signed up for this. And I kind of did that out of order. Normally, we take a motion, but we were working on the motion, so.
Well, I have another question. I'm curious if staff could speak to what I think both Ashle on Bikes and former councilman Hunt mentioned, which is this Riverside traditional bike lane versus adding the width to the multi-use path. Have we looked at that at all? I mean, in their writings, they're assuming it might actually save money. But have you?
That, that idea, I've already sent it to the DOT to start reviewing it.
Oh.
And depending on what answer I get from the DOT, Ted has already asked me if he should put it on the agenda for the aesthetics committee. So, we are in the process of working on that.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we kind of need to figure out which direction we're going in here so we do the right resolution.
Do we have space for more questions, or did that?
Oh, yeah, just staff questions?
Yeah.
Yep.
Ken, this is probably for you. So, I guess I'll just start with, like, my big picture inclination is that this is, we're never gonna touch this thing again. This is a once-in-a-lifetime deal to be made. It's over a billion dollars investment from DOT that I want to make sure that it has the best safety and pedestrian experience possible. And I see that in some of the suggestions that staff is making to maybe reduce what the aesthetics committee had recommended, that there's two places you, you say to pull back on the stamped concrete surface. I just would love you to talk to me about that, because I have a picture of what that looks like. It, it looks like kind of fake brick, or it gives you a textured look. I also know that maintenance of that with wear can become something that needs to be tended to. But can you talk to me about the rationalization? Because your suggestion to pull back on those is, you know, close to, what's that, $600,000? Talk to me about, about your why on suggesting pulling back on those elements.
Well, one of the things I'll say about that too is, the staff came up with these ideas, but they were fully vetted by the aesthetics committee as well. Back in our meeting on January 17th, we went through every one of these. So, we, we tried to think of the things that, we're not saying they're not necessary, but in trying to, in trying, in trying to come up with protecting all the other priorities that we could, this was the best way we could get the numbers to work out. Now, as far as the stamped concrete, yes, you're right. It can be stamped in various things, like brick or cobblestones or that. And that, that actual design hasn't really been decided yet. And the other part to that was a stained color as well. And part of that would have been on this multi-use transportation path to have some delineate changes so that where the bikes are would look a little different than where we're concentrating on where the pedestrians would be.
That's helpful, and I understand that brick or hexagons or whatever would be yet to be determined. But even some of what you're talking about is really helpful for me and why I think there's some value in this. Because the subtlest signals in design can really help users know literally what their lane is to be safe between pedestrians and between bikes, as well as breaking up what could otherwise be a very dull concrete experience to kind of bring some life into it so that it feels more people-centered. So, I would just, that was helpful to hear some of your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Brad, did you write us anything crafty over there?
Before, before we do that, thank you to everyone who stretched and was, were so creative with working inside design elements. From making sure that we move people more effectively and safely using all modes of transportation to push in really hard for trees, for placemaking, for mitigating the impact on the neighborhood. There have been so many hours put into that, and I know not everybody's in the room. I wonder if, no matter what comes out of the suggestion resolution, I grabbed the one that we started with, if we might consider with inclusion of support for recommendations from impacted neighborhoods, including Burton Street, Hillcrest, and Monford. Because I think that, I don't want to see us get in the way of the recommendations. But if there's a section where stamped concrete means Burton Street's not getting the placemaking and impact that they need for this humongous project to benefit their community, I don't think we want to get in their way. So I think there's probably a way to just say, with inclusion of support for the recommendations from impacted neighborhoods, including Burton Street, Hillcrest, and Monford, if there's appetite for that. I'm happy to do a friendly amendment to any other resolution recommendation.
Just on a logistics, so what I heard was that that's a separate pot of money. So would we be saying that we would be making up the difference with this pot of money?
Well, I think we have, we, we have an obligation to address the harm that's been done to those neighborhoods in our pool of funds. So if we need to go big on the aesthetics to meet our community values, including the impact on neighborhoods, I think we may have to do that. Ultimately, I would like to, staff to sign the funding recommendation that acknowledges the impacted neighborhood recommendations.
I, I was looking at the resolution that, that's attached to our agenda.
Same. And I'm happy to make a friendly amendment if someone wants to pull differently from staff.
No, and I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
I am too.
Because of the.
Suggested motion is motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a funding letter of commitment to the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding city betterments and aesthetics treatments for Project 1253B and 12513D with inclusion of support. of support for the letters of recommendation from impacted neighborhoods, including Burton Street, Hill Street, and Monford.
Okay, so just supporting their asks.
In our letter, yes.
And then should they come back with strong support for stamped concrete? We're saying we might really like to see that happen, is what I heard.
Well, no, I think you're, so there's a separate ask from the neighborhoods that DOT would fund separately. We would show support for their asks.
Those neighborhoods are not in this room necessarily right now.
Gotcha.
But I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the goal of the aesthetics committee to railroad the neighborhoods that are impacted. I think it's the goal to come alongside, and I just want to beat that.
Right. This is a both and. This is not an either or. So I mean, I think we would, I don't know why we would hesitate to support them.
That makes more sense now, so yeah.
Brad, you were trying to amend that resolution, and Councilwoman Maroney's looking at the suggested motion. So I don't think we need to alter the resolution. I was just looking at the resolution because I had the actual dollar figures in it, and that would need to be fixed.
So the question I think we need a little bit of clarity on from Councilmember Turner is it sounded as if you were proposing to essentially create a condition whereby the funding authorization would increase to what has been demonstrated as the higher amount if we don't have additional funding partners join.
Wait, wait, wait.
If we don't?
No, if we do.
If we do.
If we do have funding, yes. I don't want to over commit this. I want to signal that this council could possibly potentially support a full funding request should we find applicable partners that are willing. If you can make that crafty, I can say it.
So I would suggest, in order to capture that, and this is before the most recent proposed amendment, because I haven't heard if that's accepted yet, so we can add that. Just one second.
No, no, I think that's, as long as we.
We can add that.
We've got nods on that.
I think what we will do, and Maggie, I will help you with this, is we probably need to alter in the resolution itself the final whereas paragraph, because it does state a dollar amount. And my suggestion would be that we add the following sentence to that final whereas after the existing language to include the following. If additional funding partners participate, the total cost rises to $7,301,924.
That's the total.
That gives you essentially the bracket, and then we will alter the final paragraph, what we call the now there for paragraph, to include all the existing language with the addition of the following. At the end of that sentence, instead of a period, we would just simply say, consistent with this resolution, the final cost to the city being determined by the commitment of additional funding partners as described herein. And then the additional language Councilmember Maroney added could simply be added to the end of that with inclusion of support letters of recommendation for the impacted neighborhoods, Monford, Burton Street, I can't remember the other ones.
Hillcrest. So I have an amended amended motion.
Well, he's wordsmithing the resolution.
We have an amended motion.
So Brad, could you, on the wordsmithing of the resolution, do you all want to say that we are committing absolutely to the minimum, we are conditioning support for the maximum on additional funding partners?
Right, yes.
Okay, because I want, I'm a little worried DOT would say, what, you guys are like, what? No, we're not putting, yes. I'm just looking at staff, finance staff, they're like, you can't.
We got to have funding partners at whatever level.
Yeah, oh, okay. But just to be clear, we want to flag support for the greater amount, can it be ralded by other partners? And if that, I think what you said will work, you adjust the resolution.
As long as that is the proper trigger. So we want to include the specific estimates, both the one that was currently in the resolution and proposed motion, as well as the higher amount. We just have to articulate the trigger that would provide the authority for that higher amount.
And the goal, otherwise we risk DOT saying, what have you done? You didn't do the, you haven't provided the commitment we need to be able to move forward.
Right. Like, they're going to have to start moving forward before we're going to necessarily have funding in hand, though.
Well, not for the, I think the differential on the aesthetics recommendation, we do, I assume we have a little time to.
It said we had time. We had time to vet partners.
So wait, Rachel's saying no. What are you saying that we need to commit to? I mean.
So the commitment letter that is going to be signed needs to either be for the 7.3 million or the 5.4. And so the commitment letter, which will lock the city into what we're agreeing to, now we can identify funding partners, and we're going to in either scenario, regardless of what the recommendation is today. So what we sign tomorrow, what the city manager signs tomorrow with NC DOT, is saying these are the improvements that we are going to seek funding for, regardless of if they're city funds, TDA funds, MPO funds, the funding source doesn't matter. The city will be on the hook to identify those dollars, and we are committing to identify those dollars for those betterments.
Because what DOT needs now is to lock in the line items.
Is there an opportunity later to add the additional funds? Or is this like DOT says, this is it, we're moving forward, don't talk to us ever again?
This is it.
This is it. We will have a formal agreement that will come after the commitment letter, but the commitment letter is the first step in the process of developing that agreement.
So we have a chicken and egg problem here because we, you can't go to the, I mean, it's hard to go to the TDA or the MPO and say, do this, we do this thing, and then we can decide whether we're going to, you know, this one came together and.
What is the timeframe we have?
Tomorrow.
That we.
Tomorrow is the commitment. But the funding is not, it's not going into next year's budget.
So again, I guess, for me, this comes back to my very first question. What is staff's confidence in being able to secure other partners?
Fairly high.
Fairly high.
I mean, I feel pretty, I feel pretty, the TDA in the history, you haven't asked how long we've spent with this project.
How long?
But I mean, in the history of this project, the TDA has given strong indication they're very, very interested in supporting the aesthetic elements of this because, you know, this is the new gateway, if you will.
And that is true. I've been in conversation with Big Isley, and basically they are committed to, you know, assisting with as many of these, you know, projects as they can. And this is one that they really, you know.
Oh, you are TDA liaison, aren't you? Okay.
So I don't, that's the reason, I'm pretty confident that we can get the funding that we need.
For the higher one? So how about you make the motion?
No, 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 no. You don't have to ask Sandra. Now, Brad, if we, if we have a majority support here, to go ahead with the higher level of commitment.
Okay, so under that circumstance, I would suggest that we amend the resolution. We're not amending the motion, because the motion essentially references the resolution, which is where the dollar amount is stated. So we're going to be amending, you don't have to do this as part of the motion.
It's not amending, it's editing. We're editing.
We're editing the resolution only in that final whereas to change the dollar amount from essentially 5.4 to 7.3, for specific, $7,301,924.
And in the last whereas, it has 5.4, so we have to change that number to 7.3.
That's the one I'm mentioning.
Oh, you said in the, okay, in the last, sorry.
The last whereas is, again, it's not part of the motion, but it is part of the resolution. So it essentially remains the same, except the dollar amount would change from what you're seeing there on the right to what you're seeing on the left at the bottom category. And then if accepted, which it sounds like it is, Councilperson Maroney's additional language to the end of the motion can simply be added as stated.
So I could simply make the motion as suggested, and then we can reference that, the resolution with its updated details, which is not the current document.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you adding Councilwoman Maroney's language to the motion or to the resolution?
To the motion.
To the motion.
Okay.
I have another question on the motion, based on your suggestion, just so I'm understanding. So the vibe of it, the intention of it, is that there are neighborhoods who have other recommendations at other phases of this, and we just want to publicly say we really support what they're bringing to the table.
Yes.
I guess there's like a technical part of me who's like, I don't, I don't know what those things are. Like, I support them as people, but it's hard for me to say like, yes, I support their recommendations without us having looked at them. Am I missing that link?
That's true. I agree with that, too.
Or am I not understanding?
Well, there's design build elements, but we're talking specifically about the aesthetics. So with the lack of naming Hillcrest, Monford's recommendations are in here around noise mitigation, walls, design. I know that Monford's in here because Monford's at the table, but it wasn't explicitly named. And so it's like getting explicit behind what's in here. But additionally, Burton Street was named, but not in here, and the element of it is twofold, the mural and the contract.
So, but Monford's, Ken, is Monford's piece in the dollar figure here or in a separate part of the budget for this project?
All the noise walls are part of the DOT's basic project.
So it's not here?
It's not here, at all.
So again, the murals aren't here either. That's a separate part of the DOT's, but, so what I heard you saying was, we would want such support, but what you're saying is, well, what are they all? I don't know yet if I can.
And if I, like, maybe I just didn't read it in the stuff preparing for today.
No, no, because it's not part of this. It's not in the, this bucket of money.
Except for it is. So Burton Street did come to the table and say aesthetically, at the exit of Burton Street, we don't, like, we want to see, y'all want to see monuments, we want to see mural. And it's like, I don't think we have to pit ourselves versus the Burton Street.
But you were, you just said that it was a separate.
But what the DOT is committed to for the Burton Street community is on the backside of the noise wall. It'll have a smooth surface so a mural can go on it. The normal noise wall the DOT does now, what you see on the interstate side, you see on the backside.
But it is an aesthetics treatment.
Yes.
But it's not in this.
It's not in this, not in this at all. It's being handled through the.
Well, Councilwoman Maroney, it sounds like we may have, if we needed to make a separate letter of support for them at a later time, we could, to your point, when we perhaps, Councilwoman Olman's point, no more.
I mean, yeah.
I just, I can't, I can't say that we're going to, like, roll, I can't support this without Burton Street support. So like, I need Burton Street to be in.
Without showing support.
Yes.
Yes. So are, do you, Maggie, you want to see what all these things are before you say you support them?
Just like, on principle.
Whatever they want.
I can't say yes unless I've read the thing. You know, and that hasn't been included in what we're presented with.
Well, I think what the Councilwoman Maroney is talking about, though, are aesthetic elements. So if neighborhoods come forward with aesthetic elements that they want added, I'm trying to envision when we wouldn't support them.
One that's on there, and then I know that it's in there, is that there was an original treatment that would have meant that Burton Street couldn't turn left out of their neighborhood. And the aesthetics committee worked to make sure that we're still keeping safety for all modes of transportation while not blocking off the neighborhood. Like, that's in the backend. I just want to make sure that while we're steamrolling this very, like, heavily taxpayer-funded project, which is only just a small part of a part of a percent, it still acknowledges that they have made recommendations for the aesthetic.
One thing I'm confused about is because if you, you're saying that it's not up here, the backside of the mural for Burton Street, so we don't really control that. So how can we agree for something that we do not control?
But we can, you're saying just voicing support for it.
Yes, specifically inclusion of support for recommendations for impacted neighborhoods.
We would say to the DOT, we support the ask.
How about is it then two different motions? A motion that gets us clear on our council action, and another motion to support the neighborhood input at the ask of DOT. Okay, so let me make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a funding letter of commitment to the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding the city betterments and aesthetic treatments for Project I-2513B and Project I-2513D.
And now the resolution attached to the agenda reflects a little higher amount of 7.301924.
We've been all over the place. Is that clear?
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no.
No.
Make a second motion to instruct staff to write a letter of support for recommendations from impacted neighborhoods, including Burton Street, Hillcrest, and Monford, to accompany the letter of recommendation regarding funding for the aesthetics committee treatment.
Perfect, I'll second.
I will review the video and type it for you.
I second it, Maggie.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken, for that.
So you're going to, okay, all right. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, all right, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
I have a question. Like.
Okay, wait, did we vote?
Am I allowed to abstain, having not seen written materials in support of the proposal? Okay, all right.
Well, you can abstain, abstaining is a no vote, but you can.
Well.
Actually legally, you can, unless you have a conflict.
You, you understand law, you're required to vote, minus a conflict of interest, and if for any reason you do not vote, it is counted as a yes.
Okay. I mean, I just got to be clear with everybody. I love Burton Street. I think Burton Street's fantastic. I've been in conversations about this mural. I think that that makes sense. I just, I feel a little caught off guard with not, having written materials to consider, like, I support the neighborhood. I just, the, the lack of precision and detail makes me uncomfortable.
Understandable. But here's to not being another 25 years.
Okay, so we voted, we had a vote, should we do it again? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say no?
No.
Okay, all right.
It's okay. I love you, Burton Street.
Okay, we, we thank you, everybody. Thank you, aesthetics committee, for hanging out here all night with us.
Thank you all.
And council, we do have a closed session tonight, so we've got to keep that in mind. We have now reached boards and commissions, but the vice, the vice mayor isn't ready to take it away.
Okey dokey.
Okay, well, the boards and commission committee met earlier this afternoon.
Rowdy crowd, go out in the hall and be rowdy.
I-26 celebrations out in the hall. They can't hear us.
Okay. Okay. The boards and commission met earlier this afternoon to review 11 appointments. Nine were resignations or removed from non, or removed for non-attendance, and one was not interested in reappointment. The Asheville Area Riverfront Development Commission, the boards and committee, commission board, recommended appointment of Joe Blockin to one of the seats of the business or property owners within the riverfront district. The clerk's office is going to readvertise for the other business property owner for the riverfront district seat. So can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The audit committee, no applications were received, and the clerk's office will readvertise both these seats are for CPAs, and will have a, we've had a very difficult time filling those seats.
I think I found us one.
Great. The design review committee, the boards and committee, commissions, committee recommended the appointment of Michael McDonald. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The downtown commission, at the request of the commission and boards committee, recommended postponing the appointment, so no vote is needed for this board. The homeless initiative advisory committee, at the request of the committee chair and the staff liaison, the board and commissions committee recommended the postponing appointments, so no votes are needed for that particular board either. The multimodal transportation committee, at the request of the commission and the staff liaison, the boards and commissions recommend postponing that appointment also, so no vote is needed. The neighborhood advisory committee, the boards and commission, recommended the appointment of Michael Fulbright and Jake Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that ends our report.
So that was a lot of folks not rerunning, a lot of folks not applying enough. It just makes me wonder about this whole process.
Exactly.
Well, we also had a long conversation about moving to quarterly appointment processes and more training, more support. Since we're no longer folding boards and commissions, we need to reengage in supporting boards and commissions, which can look like when we have monthly publications, like, for example, the Earth News, and we send them a notice that something's not even going to be in print before the deadline is up. Now we have a bigger window.
Exactly.
That's great. I love that idea. All right. I think the mayor has stepped out. Do you want to do informal? Okay. Here you go, we're moving to.
Formal discussion. Well, before we do public comment, I did ask the mayor about a moment of privilege, which I am going to take. I know a lot of people are waiting. As a North Carolinian and educator and Asheville's first known out elected as a member of Asheville's[1743.11] as a member of Asheville's LGBTQ community, I'm deeply concerned about the narrative coming out of Raleigh. North Carolinians need legislators from a local to a state level to address disparities in our education, health outcomes, to attract, retain, and grow good-paying jobs, to ensure quality equitable public safety response, and an increased teacher pay. But what I see instead is an attack on human and civil rights in legislation coming out of our general assembly. Along with other electeds across the state, I've drafted a resolution affirming the full civil rights, health, safety, and well-being of our LGBTQ community members that is prepared for council consideration. Until then, I speak for myself in saying on the record for our LGBTQ plus residents, including our youth, elders, workers, visitors, and individuals who contribute to the vibrant culture of Asheville. I see you. I affirm your sacred humanity. I hear your concerns around safety and erasure. And I know that for a hopeful future for North Carolina, it hinges on our ability to advance human and civil rights for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
And now we move it on to informal discussion and public comment. Our first speaker will be Nina Tobich.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and council members. I was delighted to attend your work session this afternoon around the McCormick Field and future of the tourist baseball club in our city. It was very informative. I learned a lot. I have six key takeaways from that conversation that I had heard. The first is the importance of the impact on the neighborhood East End Valley community of not just baseball, but other uses, things like fireworks, concerts. Moving forward without significant input from the people who live there is a really bad idea. So I hope you will get, get that going really soon. There was mention about taking some of the income that is generated from McCormick and allocating that towards housing and reparations. I think that's an excellent idea. I hope you will move forward in looking at that. It came up, Councilwoman Turner pointed this out. There is in this whole process, and it suggested additional $8 million that is not accounted for in the main chart of costs, to be paid at year, I believe, '07 and '14. I think it's irresponsible to not take full notice of that and plan for it. And in that same vein, number four, impact on capital improvement projects fund. Are we going to need new bonds? Are we going to raise taxes? Voter participation on these issues seems like an important thing. And particularly, I'm concerned about the notion that we're going to be redirecting ARPA funds in order to move money around. Although that money was allocated by an arcane process that I don't understand, and nor does anyone in the public have any insight into, it was committed to community providers, and they are counting on that. So I'm wondering how we're going to be accountable about shuffling that money around. I also note, number five, a split of revenues 50/50 with the club throughout. At least that was my understanding. I don't know how that split was arrived at. I'd like to know more about that. And finally, there was no mention at any point in this discussion about a green infrastructure associated with the redevelopment of this property. It would offset utility costs, which are a substantial component of the overhead of this proposed improvement, and it would demonstrate city commitment to energy sustainability and resilience. Thank you. Surface parking lots should always have solar energy canopies.
Maggie, something wrong with our buzzer? It kind of sounds like. It's kind of cold. Paul Howard? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, City Manager Campbell, City Attorney Brenham, and the person that keeps everything together, Maggie. I planned on coming up here to speak on the McCormick Field thing, but I think I'll wait until next month for that. I wanted to ask y'all, how many of y'all remember the Imperial and the Plaza? Just two.
Not I.
I don't know where.
The Plaza movie theater.
Okay. You know, we used to have three theaters downtown, but we still, let me see, the Imperial and the Plaza got gone. And the X-rated places, the only one that stayed, the fine arts. But anyway, Asheville has always been ahead of things. And having those theaters downtown was really ahead of things. And I can just imagine the income they could bring in now. But anyway, Asheville has a tendency to move on from things that are established to try to find something new and better, instead of import what we already have. And this is what I find perplexing about this trip to go find out answers for homelessness up here in Asheville. Because my nephew, he's been implementing a plan, he's implemented something that he's had for the last two years to try to deal with the issue of homelessness. But nobody wants to listen to him. Nobody gives him a chance. I guess it's because he's not what you would consider as being a respected person in the community or a well-known or well-connected, nothing like that. As a matter of fact, he comes from the wrong side of tracks because he got in trouble when he's young. So still, all that's been held against him to date. As he tries to improve upon the things that he done wrong and better his community today, nobody wants to help him. He's came to basically everybody on this committee for help, and nobody wants to help him.
Excuse me?
Nobody wants to help him. I'm not saying nobody has, has any interest in him, but nobody has helped him yet. Let's put it like, has helped him as of yet. There was something I learned growing up about being an ex-offender, no, not ex-offender. I'm an ex-con. I'm too old to be an ex-offender. People would always say that guys get in trouble if they use some of the talent that they got to get in trouble to do things good, then they could be better off. But that's what people, that's what he's doing. He's using the skills from that mindset of creating turmoil in the neighborhood to better in the community that he's in now. So I'm hoping that everybody on this committee will listen to him, take time, listen to him, and work with us, and let's go ahead and handle this homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kay Loveland.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for being here. I'm Dr. Kay Loveland. I'm a clinical psychologist. I've lived in Monford for 20 years. I lived on Gay Street for the last 10 years, just up the hill from the Hazel Robinson Theater, which is where the wonderful Shakespeare productions take place. Well, you may or may not know that in 2022, Plugged In Productions had a couple of largely amplified large-scale concerts in that, in that area at Hazel Robinson Theater. It was very, very disruptive to our neighborhood. They were not granted permission to have more concerts, but recently they are petitioning to have more concerts, an increase of about seven concerts for 1,500 people. This is in our little neighborhood community theater that's supported by, imagine, our tax dollars. If you go, like I did, to Hazel Robinson Theater webpage, you will find it's now being run by Plugged In Productions. And there is a headline saying, "Don't kill the music in Asheville. Send this form letter to the city council saying that you support us and you want our concerts." First of all, what is Plugged In Productions, a for-profit organization doing, running the Hazel Robinson Amphitheaters website, I don't understand, for their own profit? I don't get that. But second, those people don't live in our little neighborhood, and we're the ones that are being impacted by the concerts in the past and that will be impacted in the future. And I'll give you some examples. Noise. The noise created by the concerts, the crowds, and the traffic was very disruptive before, during, and after the events, both inside and outside our homes. Our houses are close to the road. There are extremely large crowds, limited parking. People were parking everywhere with no consideration of damaging our property whatsoever. They were yelling at each other. They were kind of inebriated before they came to the concert. They were a lot more inebriated after they left the concert, hunking horns, paying little attention to foot traffic. I can't imagine having more concerts, having shuttles going back and forth. Cars are parked all up and down the road. There is not room for a fire engine to get by. Gay Street at its widest is 16 feet. You put another car parked, all cars parked all up and down the side, there's no way a fire engine could get through to get down to this only road that goes down to the Hazel Robinson Amphitheater. So that's a problem. Second, just having that many people is not great for our community. Not only is there the noise of the concert, but people were parking all over the place, including in our yard. They damaged our fence and our neighbor's fence, our property. When they leave, they throw beer bottles, trash cans, they're urinating on the side of the road. I tried to get them not to block my driveway. I said, please, I need to be able to get out. They blocked my driveway anyway, and I said to a man, please, don't do that. I have a medical condition. I may need to leave. He said, F you, I'll park wherever the F I want. I went to plug in and said, please, can you do something? They said, no, call the police. So we also have a little playground of children right up the hill. Not good for all of that foot traffic. And so I'm really asking you, please, please, pay attention to our little neighborhood, and don't let this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Louisa Branscombe?
Madam Mayor and council, thank you for your time. You must be tired. I guess you do this all the time. My name is Dr. Louisa Branscombe. I'm a clinical psychologist. My specialty is working with trauma in individuals and communities. I, my mode that I've studied, researched, and implemented is using art and music. So I come at the Hazel Robinson question with several hats on. But the main hat I want to talk from is I live at 75 Gay Street. I'm the next house up from Dr. Loveland. My house is about 20 feet from the road and about 30 feet from the playground. I also own the house behind me, which is a long-term rental, and I own the green space, which is the lot right behind Kay, which I'm hoping to keep green for the beauty of our neighborhood. I did due diligence before I moved to my house five years ago, talked to the rec department, what's going to happen with Hazel Robinson and the playground, got all the information about the playground, went through the building of the playground. Everything worked out fine. We love our neighborhood. Nothing was ever said about commercial concerts and big concerts being held at Hazel Robinson. Here's a glimpse of what we went through in 2021, which was their pilot year. It was an ongoing nightmare. The main trouble areas were parking on our lawns, blocking our drives, removing signs and boulders that we placed so they wouldn't park on our drives. Volume of noise starts at 5 and ends at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning because when you have 800 or 1,000 people, 5% or 10% are going to want to keep partying. And we're a better place than children's playground designed for kids aged 5 to 10. So they're on top of the obstacles with lewd behavior, peeing off of them, exchanging drugs, and so on. And this goes on until 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. So calling the police is something I hate to do if it doesn't look life-threatening. They're very busy, and they're always extremely responsive and courteous, but it just doesn't work because people come right back. Repeatedly, when I went down to the guard at, at the PIP concerts and said, we've got problems up here. My guests can't even get to my house to have dinner. I was told, you can't go talk to them unless you buy a $50 ticket. I said, well, could you call them on your walkie-talkie? Because people can't get down the road, and we can't get out Monford. And so she did call them on the walkie-talkie, and he was standing, and she was standing right there talking to him on a walkie-talkie or phone. And he said, it's not my problem. We only have, we're only in charge of right up to where the theater stops. That left everywhere where we live out. So it was suggested that I send videos and photos to the police liaison about the criminal behavior on the playground and in our yards and so on. And I did. I think that there was some turnover. However, the bottom line was there's so much confusion about who does what.
That, thank you. You can, please feel free to email us also for any. You can hand it to Maggie, and she'll hand them around. Thank you very much. The next person signed up to speak is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Oh, no.
Oh. Did you do that, too?
Oh.
Oh.
I couldn't resist this historic occasion, this, you know, Valentine's Day. As it turns out, I brought a dozen roses, which is, you know, that's enough for everybody on city council, plus one for Brad and one for Deborah, and three for Maggie.
Because of course.
That's right. All right, and I also brought chocolate. And if Brad thinks that maybe this is a problem, you know, that I'm currying, that there's a gift of some sort.
Let's see where he's going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You don't want to be the guy that told all these women that they can't have chocolate. So it's just, but I am here, of course, to court the support of a change in our election system, you know? I mean, the city has been involved with this long-term relationship with the at-large election system, you know? But I think that the district election system would serve the city much better. It's more modern, definitely, and it's certainly younger. And it, it brings attention to every piece of the city holistically, all the way around, you know, the north, the south, the east, the west, and the central. It's guaranteed to be that way every year. I saw Mark Hunt here. He was, he was on one of the city councils where we had three people from one precinct, not just one little area town. So, you know, there was that historic moment. And, you know, since I've come to be a thorn, you know, I just figured that I would bring some roses for you so that, you know, we would maybe have a different type of dialogue. Some eucalyptus in them. So I just wanted to have a better time with you tonight. And I know that you're really waited with bated, with bated breath to talk about the Reed Howe Act, of course. I know that you've probably been looking that up and doing your homework on that. But I'll break it down for you soon enough, probably in March sometime. But thank you for all that you've done and putting up with me over the years and doing so. And if for some reason this small token of my appreciation does run afoul of North Carolina state statues, you can just donate it all to the clerk's office.
Some of Maggie's candies are like 10 years old, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.
Very playful.
Next, person signed up to speak is Roe. Sorry, she's gonna, it's gonna.
Okay. Well, first of all, I think I want to give you guys enough time, you know, to speak your mind. I have a two-part, one is, one is a question, and then another is a suggestion. So if you could allow me a little bit more time so that you guys can answer the question.
Well, hold on. Let me, let me let Maggie restart your time because you only have three minutes to speak, and we do not respond during that time. So that's part of the, the way it works. This is the statutorily required public comment period, so we're listening.
Oh, I thought, I thought you guys, I actually had a question. So, well, I guess I'll just monologue. I didn't bring a manifesto or anything. So my question is about the UDO.
Let's do it.
I feel in the last couple of years that I've been here that there is a disconnect in the conversation between the citizens and you guys, both in a developmental sense. And I wanted to be clear myself whether the UDO was something that originated in Asheville rather than it just being a copy-paste document from another major city that we thought that we could overlay onto Asheville residents. I want to, I want to give a shout out to Ben also because one of my first projects here is a four-house project that I thought I would have 11 houses finished by now. I moved back here from Hong Kong, and I am a city planner. I've lived and worked in 22 countries, and my home is Hong Kong and here. And I've really tried to have a conversation with you guys. And if it wasn't for Ben, after 400 emails, writing all of your department heads and asking questions and getting nowhere, if he didn't personally walk it through, nothing would have gotten done. And he was with me probably after, you know, 100 or 150 emails later.
Wow.
And so I'm just saying. And so I'm just saying, some kind of communication is broken between the citizens, you know, and you guys making them feel like they are part of the conversation rather than, you know, them feeling like you guys are doing things for, you know, big corporate interests. So our presentation's, you know, all tonight. Is my time over?
No. You get snaps.
So when I've seen on the screen, you know, the I-26 project, I see a lot of infrastructure stuff, a lot of big, you know, billion-dollar ideas. You know, a lot of roads, people are talking about bikes. I would love for you guys to think about, instead of maintaining these roads and building the roads, like where are the roads, what are the roads connecting? There has to be a fabric in the community where, you know, there has to be commerce and how people are making their living from all this connection.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next person signed up to speak is David Moritz.
Hi, city council. And how many apartments have been built in North Asheville in the last 10 years? One.
One.
One apartment. And it's not the one on Larchmont because that was built in 2011. It's the one on Broadway. I think it's called the Harrison. It's got 36 new units. So the question is, why is that? I think it's an important question that we address because I think people would want to live there. I mean, right now, it's a bit reserved for privileged people, such as myself. I actually live in North Asheville, and I'm privileged to live there. But we are not doing enough to have more diversity there in North Asheville. And part of the reason, I'm just going to be specific, is the zoning. I mean, most of the zoning is single-family. There's some multifamily zoning, but where the multifamily zoning is, we've already built single-family housing, so it's not going to be displaced. So let's talk about really where the housing needs to be. And I'm going to quote Councilwoman Roney, who said, "Housing needs to be close to resources." And we're pushing people further out from the resources. And Merriman Avenue would be a natural place to build housing. In fact, the Jefferson was built there in 1925. Asheville Arms was built in 1967, and North Side was built in 1950. Currently, the zoning is CB-1. The maximum size building you can build is 12,000 square feet. The maximum floor plate is 6,000 square feet. To give you an idea of what that is, it's the Chick-fil-A on Merriman. That's on an acre of land. It's about 5,000 square feet. That's pretty much the only thing you can build on Merriman. That's why Merriman has not changed because all you can build is a Wendy's or a McDonald's. You can't build any housing despite the fact that we have two buses going down Merriman. We have the N1 and N2, which I've taken because it's convenient, but barely anybody takes it. We should be building apartments on Merriman as close as possible to downtown to serve our community, and the zoning doesn't allow it. And nobody, as, you know, you mentioned at one of the meetings about the Larchmont project that was, came through in 2010, there was a significant amount of resistance to that project because they had to get a rezoning. The only way you can build anything on Merriman is rezoning, and there was so much pushback. I think the only reason that went through is because it was 100% affordable housing, and it was done by Mountain Housing, which was willing to take the risk. But nobody, no private enterprise is going to take the risk of trying to rezone a site on Merriman. And it's a natural place for us to build housing. So unless... That's just one example. We need to really review our zoning so we can build housing close to resources and public transportation. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Jared Wheatley.
Oh, we get more flowers?
More flowers?
This is all I'm going to get.
Shio Diwado, Jared Wheatley. Unfortunately, my thunder was a little bit stolen. I thought I was really going to be unique tonight. But I'm going to go one step further. I run a small project called the Indigenous Walls Project. We focus on amplifying native voices, raising awareness of indigenous causes, and sooner or later land back. We'd like the whole chunk, but we'll take what we can get. What we've done is, I think, over the last year, we've been speaking the wrong love language. I'm like an acts of service guy. That's what I'm about. So we've got out there, and we've produced about 15,000 square feet of murals, which sometimes is known as placemaking, I believe it was called earlier. Those murals, we get a lot of feedback from elders in our community, from a very diverse population. It's difficult to be Afro-indigenous. A lot of times, folks don't want to speak up about their indigeneity if they don't fit the prototype or the mold. So through these acts of service, I've been flirting with all of you, hoping to get your attention and appreciation. And so I'm here to speak directly with words of affirmation about how much I love the city of Asheville and with a gift of a rose to hopefully catch your attention because Buncombe County has done a great thing and followed our lead by putting together the Equity Murals Project, at which point they just opened up public space, and they said, "What do you guys want to do? We have this idea about being inclusive. What do you guys want to do?" They got more than 20 proposals that were very unique, came from a very broad spectrum of artists and activists. And I think the city could meet that. In fact, we've actually already been invited to engage Atlanta and their Beltway. So by flirting with you guys, we've done good things like spread the creativity of Asheville abroad to Buncombe County and soon to Atlanta, Georgia. But I would like for you guys to take our hand, you know, and the community's hand, and allow us to unlock the creative potential of our community without all the committees. I think it's possible, and I trust you guys to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're not allowed to. It's okay. But Maggie can. We give you the eye contact. Thank you.
And the last person I have sign up to speak is Queenie McLeod.
I like that jacket. Good evening, everyone. My name is Queenie McLeod. I'm owner of a local food truck here in Asheville. It's called Queens Island Cuisine. And today, I'm here seeking change in policies as it pertains to food truck owners in Buncombe County. Specifically, there are zoning laws and ordinance that keeps food trucks from operating in the central downtown area. I also understand that restaurants are concerned that food trucks might redirect traffic from their business. But as for myself, I would be operating at hours that most, if not all, downtown restaurants are closed. And the hours would be from 11:00 p.m. to maybe about 2:30 a.m. And as a millennial that frequents the downtown area for the nightlife, what I've noticed is there's a lack of food in the radius of where most of the bars are. So if I was permitted to operate during these hours, I think it would have a positive impact on the economy in the downtown area. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I wouldn't mind an... I wouldn't mind an update on that. We moved that policy to remove generators in downtown, which is what she's referring to. And then we said you could plug them in if they were in certain permitted locations. But I'm not sure that really worked out in our favor.
So I know we're not responding to public comment. However, I did present some questions to staff. And so if staff's going to get instruction from us, we kind of need a signal support for that to relook at it. We talked about in the Policy and Finance Committee today, policy around using public space for things like restaurants using the public right of way. But we haven't revisited the conversation around food trucks in a long time. So we're talking about local businesses, food options, but also just use of public space. So I asked for some information from staff. We have a memo. Perhaps we could circulate that memo to all of council so we could look at...
That'd be helpful.
What it looks like to have an update. Because things are changing in the restaurant...
They are.
Industry with not having as many late-night options.
So, and I don't know which committee we would route this through, but we could figure that out. I will, I...
Public space of downtown.
Being around the last time we, or the only other time we did it, the big issue was around noise. So...
We found alternative solutions.
It was viable spaces, whether, what public spaces we could make available, how to deal with the noise of the generator versus ability to plug them in. So that's...
I would support seeing this memo and looking into it only because I do manage parking lots in downtown, and I have now encountered three food trucks that have altered their internal systems to do away with generator and plug into a 110 outlet. So there are other things. It's time to revisit.
So we'll figure out how to route that through.
And, yeah, Downtown Commission has a public space management committee. Maybe there.
Okay, we have, I don't know if we have anyone else signed up to speak, but we do have...
The memo is... The memo that Ms. Rontz was talking about is attached to your communication today.
We do have a closed session motion.
Let's do it.
I moved that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1. The law that makes information privileged and confidential is NC General Statute 143-318.10E2 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the city of Asheville, including on a list of potential economic development incentives. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.